All right, we'll get started. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Rachel to lead us in the pledge. Well, hello everyone, and welcome to our special guest. Our first item on the agenda is any comments or board acknowledgements before we get started?
I was just gonna say I'm somewhat of the legislative update category. Are we getting to that on the agenda or not?
I don't think it's on the official agenda.
Okay. I did go down to Montpelier in sort of a multitude of hats and provided some testimony to the House Ed Committee before they passed the bill along. And then stayed to listen to the open session, two-minute testimonies or statements that people brought in. Was frankly, pretty surprised by the more heavily weighting towards the positive inclination to look at different ways of delivering education for the benefits of kids. From board members, administrators, and parents. Not all, but I was surprised by the weighting being more heavily
In favor of.
In favor of. There are definitely issues around choice that will remain an issue, I think, throughout the state. So my role in that was largely, I was asked because of my position on the VSPA Board, to provide the testimony in, in the House Ed Committee. But again, was interested to hear the full breadth of feedback that was happening at that meeting for that two hours. So it's interesting. It's, of course, as you shared, moved on with a 10-0 vote.
Yeah.
So it'll be interesting to see what happens next.
I find it interesting that the, the way they're pitching the bill has nothing to do with cost savings.
I know.
In fact, they don't even go near it. They just say, this is for the benefit of kids.
Yeah. And, and actually, some of the, some of the testimony that came after mine was a little bit more on the financial end of it. And there will be costs up front to make these sorts of transitions. And those are acknowledged and somewhat expensive. So, and then I popped over to the House Ways and Means Committee where they passed largely in favor the rather than seven cent increase in the statewide homestead tax. It's four percent as it is moving out of that committee. Four cents, I'm sorry, as opposed to the seven cents that we had been previously projecting on. So that passed that committee and moves on. So, latest and greatest from Montpelier, that does change the tax implications of our, you know, budget being in that under two percent on the operating budget.
Right.
Contributing to the larger tax increase, which will be less larger than we thought it would be.
One of the things we have to talk about tonight is the presentation on the 31st and how we might wanna provide some updates because the landscape has shifted a little bit. So, that will be interesting. I, I addressed it actually some, a little bit in my piece that showed up in the Essex Reporter last week. The idea that it's a shifting picture. Still coming into focus, whatever, whatever metaphor. Yeah, it was perfect timing, actually, so.
And as they, as they passed that and wrote it on that section of that bill, they, they acknowledged the good work of boards because most boards in the state have voted in keeping the overall increases down and contributing to that. And they found money in other ways and other places that are concessions that by my reading didn't seem to affect our, our district at all in some of the changes that they were making. So, they didn't pull it out of thin air. It seems as though they had been thoughtful about finding the money as opposed to just deciding the political will was they would change it.
Right, although I
Not that that ever happened.
Although I understand it was mostly one-time money that they found.
Mostly.
Yeah. You wonder how many school budgets would've passed had the four cent spend part of the original equation.
That makes me think that maybe as they rewrite their, some of those districts rewrite their budgets, you may not get as draconian in their cuts. They may resubmit something that's not much different.
Yeah, I wonder how it's impacting the discussions in Burlington. I think they're looking at forty-plus positions.
Really, no money.
Yeah. Well, when you, when you have an organization where seventy-five percent of the costs are human, you know, are personnel.
I get it, they have to cut, they have to cut personnel, but wow, that's a lot.
It is a lot, yeah.
But keep in mind that that is a tremendous safety factor because in the history of this school board, we used to send out, for talking purposes, fifteen RIF notices just in case. But either the budget passed in total, or maybe we only had to cut back one or two staff numbers. But that's not to say that any of those forty-eight in fact would be cut.
Right, right, yeah. Any other comments or acknowledgements?
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge all the kids who did a variety of different enrichment-type programs over the weekend. Of course, Odyssey of Mind is fresh in my mind, but also Imagination Destination or Destination Imagination. I keep forgetting which ones first. And then the Junior Arm Shuff was also this weekend. So lots of different opportunities our kids had to interact with other kids throughout the state in many of these formats. So that was fabulous.
Cool. Great, anything else? Well, before we get on with the full agenda, which has us going until ten-thirty this evening. So, you know, I couldn't think of a better way to end my last regular school board meeting than by having a marathon.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering if we can consider tabling any of the items on the agenda, given that we have a lot to chew off tonight. And I think we, we may actually have a conversation about the calendar as well. So, I know it's a little bit strange, but I'm wondering if we might table 4.4 until the next regular meeting. Just seeing how it's not a critical policy for tonight. And we've got a lot of great stuff on the agenda.
So the next regular meeting being the 31st, Brenda?
Well, I think the
In your absence.
I think the way I understand it is that the 31st is mostly the informational meeting about the budget. So I don't think the regular, the next regular meeting after that would be after the vote, I believe. April 13th, so. I would be absent for this, this report, but maybe it's an opportunity for you to talk about the next chair. And expectations you have for the next chair.
Of course, a post-mortem is supposed to
That's right. So you could talk about me in my absence.
Is she gonna see your rating for tonight?
I'll catch it on RTM.
We get done at ten-thirty, you may not wanna know.
Yeah, you may not wanna hear it, yeah.
All right, well, without objection then, we'll table 4.4 until the next regular meeting. And that gives us a little bit of, of oxygen on some of these things. So without further ado, why don't we jump right into the consent agenda? And is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Oh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we might consider just removing the calendar just for sort of update on how the changes we made last year to the, the teacher conference, celebration of learning, how that has fared relative to, you know, parent participation.
Is there a second on removing the calendar from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Second time.
Okay, is there any further discussion or you wanna speak anymore to me?
No, I just, I did wanna pose that question just 'cause we had made that change last year with the effort to have participation throughout the year with parents and having the occasion in the fall with a single day. Did we have a change in participation in terms of
For the fall?
In the fall? And our, I assume in the spring, you know, every attempt that we made to sort of cha-change from two days in the fall and two days in the spring to meet parents for parent conferences, did we notice the, those efforts to be achieving what we were hoping? Are we getting this rate of participation that was hoped out of some of those changes?
So before you answer it,
We haven't voted on it yet.
We need to vote on whether or not we want to have that conversation. So is there, I'm gonna call the question.
Sure.
So all is in favor of removing the calendar from the consent agenda for further discussion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Okay, the majority rules, and so the calendar is out on the table for discussion and conversation.
I'd be glad to respond briefly. I wasn't prepared to respond to the question, and I think it would require require having some comments from the principals, I can tell you. So this is gonna be very anecdotal, 'cause I don't have anything to share with you. Last year was a, was a transition year for us. If you recall, there were some, you know, some bumpiness around the celebration of learning, how that was, how that was branded, how that was marketed, you know, people not surely, you know, completely aware of what that means in terms of its effect on parent conferences. So I think that that was, that said, you know, we look forward to being over that hump now. And with that, I, you know, we did briefly touch about it, you know, last Thursday when I told the leadership team I was bringing forward the calendar. And so I would just defer to Kevin Joyce and Peter in terms of have you seen what level of, you know, participation on the part of parents at the conference level and just in general, has it been affected by, you know, what we, what we've changed, which was not taking away a parent conference day, 'cause it's the month of October and the month of April. That's the big idea. We haven't packed parent conferences into one or two. It used to be four days when I first got here. Now we're into two days, but it's for the month of October and the month of April. And the expectation is that we open up our doors to conference with parents, that we initiate or we respond in kind if parents ask sometime during the month, and then those two days at both ends of the year are comp days for the time the teachers put above and beyond. So it wasn't a concession at all on the part of the union. They felt that that was a fair sort of middle of the road. And I feel that we're on much more stable ground than we were a year ago at this time of the year. And from where I sit, you know, I see parents engaged all the time in a schoolhouse. But if the question's specifically around formal conferences, then I, then I think that the principals can probably respond to that.
Because I had witnessed conferences here before. In October, I did a census after. There was no class that had more than one parent who was not able to attend, and most of those were done by telephone. So we had very, very close to a hundred percent participation in our fall conferences.
I would say off the top of my head, I think it's a hundred percent. So for me, it's a hundred percent, and we also have a, you know, I think any parent understands that if they wanna speak with their child's teacher at any time, email or a phone call, and then they'll have an appointment to talk. To me, what we gained was the celebration of learning, which I, I thought was tremendously successful at the elementary school. And both in terms of parent reaction, child reaction, and teacher reaction, I thought it was very well received.
I would say similar. The, the participation at the middle school was phenomenal in the fall time. I would say close to, if not a hundred percent. I think the, another piece that, and Peter did it as well, I'm not certain, Joyce, your school, we had a fall celebration with our Unified Arts with teachers. They did a night. That was well-attended. We also constantly see parents walking through, coming into meeting with teams. I would, if I said there was at least five to ten a day, that's probably pretty close between parents coming in from meetings of all different kinds, from special education to just having conversations with, with teachers and parents. But the other thing that I've noticed that's been a difference is I've noticed teams taking it more on their own to create their own celebration of learning. Not saying celebration of learning, but having a morning for parents to come in and to see a very similar activity that might be taking place here in May when we have ours at the middle school. Just a couple of weeks ago, the Navigators Team, which is Eric Biederbeck and Katie Rose, put on a breakfast biography, and parents and grandparents came in to see that. And it was a great example of learning from beginning to end. And it was a great way for the kids to have that voice and to share that with their, with their families. So I'm starting to see that around more often.
You know, I, I think the, the misstep that I took was in, in my communication initially, and this was over a year ago, that trying to look at using performance-based measures, portfolio was one, student-led conferences, projects that go from the start to the finish, was not to preempt the traditional, very highly valued parent-teacher conference. And that wasn't messaged properly. So I, I do think that we're over that bump. The, the events that will be happening in each of our three schoolhouses starting in early May will continue to reflect, but yet we've got much clearer standards and expectations around what that celebration of learning looks like. And that message will be coming from building staff rather than the superintendent, because buildings need to own it, which our three school leaders do. And I think that there's much greater support for that. What's more is that we have the, the conference months established with comp time built in. So I do believe that, that one bump was, was unfortunate, but we'll, we've moved on.
So one question I have is I, you know, as a parent, I appreciate the fact that my students, teachers are more than happy to meet with us anytime we have a concern or a question. And they're very responsive on email if there's just something kind of quick. So that's appreciated from the parent's side, but from the sort of staff management side, how is, has that been an easy transition? If, I mean, if that truly is the culture that more often, parents are able to meet whenever, you know, outside of the parent conference months, is that putting any sort of undue stress or unexpected stress on teachers?
I, Brendan, I don't believe so. I think one of the things that I pride myself a lot with the middle school is how they are, I think they do a phenomenal job of communicating with parents and asking them to come in. If there's a, if there's a little hiccup along the way, they're more than, more than quick to bring parents into the conversation to help out. So that's always been established. So, I don't believe so.
And I, there is a shift happening, and, you know, we've had our final work session today as a group looking, we're looking at the teacher, teacher growth process in Essex Town, and teacher evaluation lives within that construct. And we have, we have very clearly stated that student feedback and voice and parent feedback and voice is part of the data we receive as educators to get better grades. So that's the shift that's happening that we need. It's not like we have to have families. We need families part of the work. And I do believe that that's starting to catch on and clinging on to some of the systems that we have operating from ESTs to parent conferences to reporting out on student performances, the parent pieces is becoming not prominent, but more part of the conversation. So I appreciate the question. I don't feel really prepared to respond in any substantive way.
That was all I wanted to sort of check in on, that we've had a year with a somewhat newer approach, and we're putting out another calendar that reflects that approach. Do we feel like we still had our engagement with families? And it sounds like that's the case, so thank you.
Yep, in a, along the same subject, the other concern that I've heard more from the teacher's side is time taken away from teaching for celebration of learning. That, what are we doing, how is that, how is that generating? And I know that was a, there was a lot of that discussion last year. I'm just curious how that's been addressed towards this year, if that's been addressed. Is there a similar
Again, a big conversation in terms of time being a finite resource. So for, maybe for another time, Dan, but I guess I would encourage you, if teachers are talking about their concern, they should shovel it back to the principal to try to address that. Part of the problem is that we don't all teach that way. So if we're asking teachers to produce student work that reflects sixteen weeks of a unit, and they haven't kept a portfolio for sixteen weeks, that's, that's difficult. And so it's easy to blame time, but it's also a matter of, is it the way, do we integrate that type of teaching into our daily practice? And I would say not in all cases. But time is a real, a real critical issue, and we're, we're well aware of it. So we've been very mindful of that, and actually the dates and times that have been established in the schoolhouse have been, been consensus in terms of what teachers think they can manage, and we've, we've followed their lead. And it's a very, it's, it's not a large, it's not a big day. It's a, it's a section of, it's a little section of time. But if we're teaching by minimally, make, holding on to student work without sending it home, the work is done. It's just how do you engage the child in sharing with mom and dad what their journey's been about for the last number of weeks? And that's, that's the, that's a piece that we're, we're working on right now. We debriefed at the end of, after the celebration of learning last year as a staff at our next staff meeting and discussed just, you know, how'd it go? And the, what, one of the teachers said, and it was a, a general consensus in agreement with us, that this needs to be part of our culture. This needs to be part of the way we operate. Not a separate, special thing set aside. This just needs to be part of our culture. Which I thought spoke volumes in terms of, it, for us, it, it, it just fit right in with the way we operate.
So possibly a lot of the bump last year was the fact that it wasn't yet part of our culture. And here we are lumping this extra thing on, oh my gosh, time-consuming, we weren't prepared for this. Now hopefully we're one year further along, more prepared, more integrated.
And the other piece is it is about one for all, for one, and we have a rich history of doing things individually as teachers and individually as teams, individually as grade levels. So the celebration is really about, for building that esprit de corps, that we are one faculty that celebrates learning together. So there isn't this comparing of, they did this and they did this. So it's really about doing it together. And that's also sort of a value-added piece. And I think that that's a little bit of the push. Well, we already do a celebration of learning in the morning on Thursday. This is different than that. This is the whole faculty, which is, it is, it is a little bit more time.
Well, I think unless there's any other sort of critical point that needs to be made, I'd like for us to move along, 'cause we are crushed for time, so. So I'm gonna call the original question on the motion to approve the consent agenda.
As in, in total?
In total. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Standing. Consent agenda has passed. Great. So, moving right along to the third item on our agenda, we have a presentation tonight by Dr. Michael Hock, who is with the Agency of Education, and he's the Director of State Assessment, and I'll turn it over to Mark for
Thanks Brendan, I'd like to celebrate S-Back.
Boy, you're one of the few people, Mark.
Michael, just for your benefit, and, and maybe we just go around the table quickly, and I'll give him a quick control.
Kim Gleason, Vice Chair of Board and Mama Four, one kid left in the middle school, the other three at the high school.
I'm Brendan Kenny, the outgoing Chair of the Essex Town School Board, and
You keep mentioning it.
It seems to be a recurring theme. And I have three kids in the district, one in each of our buildings, so.
Dave Clough, gray-haired, the only one on the school board that does not have kids in the school.
Dan House, I've got an eighth grader and a fourth grader. How long have we been on the board? Four years?
Ten plus.
He does.
Rachel Bastid, remember, I've got four kids in the school district, two in the older building and the one in each of the others.
This, this falls Michael's presentation under 4.8, which is board investment. And board investment, of course, is about your professional growth as a board, and as we have in a couple times. Michael brought friends and neighbors and colleagues and experts in to visit with the board, give sort of big picture. And we felt it was time that the board got a little bit of better handle on, on our new statewide assessment that's being ushered in at this very moment as we speak. And we're really interested in hearing, you know, what you have to share with us. Michael's been at the agency, I believe, since 2004, or thereabouts. I first met Michael when he was a teaching faculty at the University of Vermont. So he's got a storied history and a great background in helping support all kids, especially our Vermont kids. So glad to have you, and
Thanks, Mark.
This is a good presentation. Several of us got to see this back in the fall.
Well, yeah.
Parts of it.
Earlier version, but yes.
And it's very, it's very rich in content, and what we wanted to try to do is keep it up here, and there's a lot of interesting things about the administration of this assessment, which we're, we're coming to realize. But we look forward to your, I'm sure Michael knows some of your questions. You want, throughout the presentation or afterwards, whatever you like.
All the way through.
Brendan's gonna do a good job keeping us on time, so.
Great. And I, I would mention, this is also part of my professional development, because I, I'm at the stage now that, that I'm trying to write sort of one-page briefing papers for folks, and one is definitely gonna be for board. So I, I encourage your questions, 'cause I kind of guessed what you might wanna know, and Mark and Ellen gave me a few hints. But please ask me questions, so I, so I know what boards wanna know about this stuff. Oh, and since, I should've counted the kids. You also represent a lot of kids, so. I'm interested in what you think they think about it. So I, I'll just start by saying, and you, you may already know this, but we have given the kneecap examination, our fall test for the last time in October, and we released the results on those tests in February. So I hope you saw them, and I hope your students saw we're proficient with the stinks. So today is also sort of a milestone for me and my work with S-Back, because tomorrow begins the, the large-scale field testing of this new examination. And Essex schools have been kind enough to help us do this field testing, and I'll talk to you more about that later, why it's important. But I think, I think across the twenty-five S-Back states, there's twenty-two thousand schools that are gonna be participating in, in field testing, and at some extent, millions of kids. I can't remember how many millions, but. In Vermont, we have twenty-eight schools and about five, nearly six thousand students who are part of the, the field testing.
That'll be a field test.
So that, that's, that's my introduction, introduction. This is, you know, as I'm saying up here, it's just stuff you should know, you know. Or maybe not. You're gonna tell me, if any of the stuff you don't need to know. But I, I tried to, to make this more focused on community people and board members and parents rather than teachers. I have another presentation for them, and it gets down kind of in the weeds of the administration stuff. But this is more to help you understand what this test is about, how it's different than kneecaps, since you've, everyone, but Dave has experienced that in one way or another, so that, that's my goal. And, and again, my, my goal really is for you to ask me questions, so that I can get better at this when I speak to another board sometime.
I think the quiz for David is, can you please show the linkage between new standards reference exam, which preceded kneecap? Kneecap and now S-Back. As the historian on the board.
Yeah. And do they take new standards?
I'm sure they did.
It's changed so many times, I can't say.
That started, I think, in ninety-six was when the new standards exam started. And that's about when I got started with all this, with the new standards. Oh, I can aim at the screen. And is it?
It should be on.
Which, the green button?
No, that's a laser. So that's on.
It's that one, okay. So, you know, the question we usually start with, for folks, is they, they wanna know, well, why do we need a new test? Aren't these tests expensive? And what, what was wrong with kneecap? Are you getting rid of it? And I'll, I'll kind of go down through this list, but you know, the big thing is that if, if you just think about, we administered kneecap the first time in 2005, and if you just think about the changes in computer, computers, for example, since 2005, those kind of changes we've seen across the country for all of us have, have also seen great development within the field of educational evaluation. And so, you know, one of the big differences here is that we have much, much better technology now for assessing students that we hope provides results that are more precise, but the testing is more efficient, and it's more engaging for students by delivering it by teacher, by a computer. So that's our main reason for, for doing this. We just, it's time for a better test, and we now have the technology to do it. So, but a few of the points are that, you know, as I mentioned, Smarter Balance is now made up of about twenty-five states. There's a, a second national consortium, the, the PARRC Consortium, and they are made up of about sixteen states. And, you know, the thought was that these tests are so expensive that it makes sense for states to get together and develop these tests, and you could kind of benefit from those economy of scale things. And by the way, I'm proud to say this, that the nation learned this from our little New England states who joined together for the kneecap program. We were the, that, we were the first national collaboration of states to, to try to develop a test together. We were pretty successful, and a lot of folks looked at that. And what we were kind of pleased that in Barack Obama's first speech on education, he mentioned our kneecap program as, you know, those folks up in New England figuring out a better way to test kids. I don't know if he did that or not, but at least we saved a little money. There, there were, there was concerns going, going back to, to, you know, the beginning of the No Child Left Behind Act and so on, that it required each state to develop its own standards. And the result we ended up with was that different states show different levels of proficiency for their kids, but there's no, there's no comparability across those, those states. I'll give you an example, not to pick on Mississippi, but they just stand out as a good example of this, that on their state test, they have about as many students scoring in the proficient range in reading as Vermont does. But on the, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which is the only test right now that's given to all states, we have about seventy percent of our kids proficient in reading, and they have about thirty. So this idea of having different standards, it, it created a problem with comparability across states, and people wanted a way to do this. So it may be apparent that part of, you know, the Smarter Balance development So it may be apparent that part of, you know, the Smarter Balanced development is because now we have a set of standards, the Common Core that have been adopted by 46 or so states. So when you get new standards, you get a new test.
Real quick touch on, you mentioned the PARRC, the other 16 states through that. How well are those gonna? Are we missing the boat on, on being able to compare across all states? Because we still do, we still will have two different sessions, or are those?
You know, boy, that, no, there, there's a good question. It's one that, it's one that really resonates for me, because I was, I, I'm pretty involved nationally with, with the Smarter Balanced Consortium. I'm on the executive board, and and so I paid a lot of attention to the sort of the national issues about this. And we thought in the beginning that the two consortia would develop, they would get together and develop assessment targets, so that both tests were essentially measuring the same things. And for some reason or another, the U.S. Department of Education didn't push that, and it never happened. So we will be able, through the magic of statistics, create what are called concordance tables, so that we can tell you that a score of X on S-Back is equivalent to a score of Y on PARC. But do they measure the same things? I, I really can't say that. And we won't know that until some people do some research after the tests are given.
Will NAEP remain a national exam, or will it go back?
That's a big conversation that's out there. For now, it's, it's still going to be around. And in fact, because of Dan's question, NAEP really has developed a new importance, because it's kind of the, it's the common denominator between the two tests. So that we can see, we can use NAEP as the bridge from one assessment to the other to create those statistics. This, this next thing, heavy use of multiple choice questions, it kind of gets back to where I started with this. It's just that, you know, the, our, our tests up until the Smarter Balanced era that we're now beginning, they were pencil and paper, fill-in-the-bubble type tests, and we can do a lot better than that. You know, I, I sat in an airplane recently, flying back from California, next to a kid that was playing Angry Birds, and the kid was so engaged, but when I looked at what he's doing, he was doing like, you know, rates and motion and inclined planes, and all these things that would have been, a math teacher would have loved to see. And I thought, you know, this is what we need to do with tests. You know, Angry Birds, you know, why not? And, and so it's something that your students are going to see, and right now, we're somewhat limited by our, our technology infrastructure in the schools. But as these tests develop, our test questions will begin to look more and more like Angry Birds, and less and less like, you know, the nasty tests you took when you were in high school or elementary school. So anyway, much better questions. We're hoping that we challenge students to really use critical thinking skills in ways we haven't before. And, and I'll get to this too, but you know, Mark was talking, and I know that for a long time, Mark has been interested in, in performance assessments and portfolios and that sort of thing. One thing that's a unique aspect of this test is that it, it combines more traditional short-answer-type questions with performance tasks, that students start working with classmates on a classroom activity, and then they work for a couple hours across a couple days to do the performance task. And that, that part of the assessment is mixed with the more typical items. Because we, we believe we want to challenge students to really apply the skills, not just, you know, bubble in circles. Right now, because of the way our tests are scored, and you folks are parents, so you probably know this, your students take the test in October. You don't see any results till February. This is because we're now assessing students on computer, and a lot of the infrastructure that we used to run the whole assessment system is now technology-rich, and so we, we'll get results back much more quickly.
Has that system been built yet?
It's, it's built. It's built, and that's, that's part of what the field test is about, to test the system.
Just thinking, and there's been a lot of controversy about, you know, rollout of government software in the last few months.
Yeah, you know what, though? See, but that is, that's a great point. And if, if they had asked me, I would say, you know, you really ought to field test that health care. Because that's, that's why, starting tomorrow, we have, you know, three or four million kids in 22,000 schools trying this thing out before it becomes official.
The lights flicker in founders.
That's what we want to happen. You know, Joe Wilhoff, who's the big boss of Smarter Balanced, says that, you know, we will be disappointed if something doesn't go wrong doing the field test, because we want to uncover the, the problems now, not next spring at this time when we're starting to get this official.
We'll do our best.
Which I was to break you.
Yeah, yeah. You don't know. I mean, the adults try to break these things, but only kids really know how to break a computer.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I, you know, this next thing, accommodations for special education to young little students, I, I'm really proud of this. This is, actually, I think when I first met Mark, we were both special ed guys in one way or another. And so I, I come out of being a special education teacher, and then I was a, a special ed administrator. And for the last three or so years, this is the area of the Smarter Balanced test I've concentrated on. I did a lot of the lead on identifying or developing digital tools that we can embed in the assessment that will help students who have special needs. And I, I'll give you a few quick examples that we go through, but you know, things like, you know, on, on, for math testing, students who aren't strong leaders, readers, excuse me, a math test can turn into a reading test. Well, you know, every kid's computer now, your, your Apple there, it's got text-to-speech on it. And so we're going to let students use digital tools like that to take the test. And for students who don't speak English as their first language, we're going to have things that are called keyword translation glossaries, where the student can mouse over a word in a question on the, on the test, and it'll translate that word not only into the student's native language, but it will choose the, the translation that is the way the word's used in the question. Because, you know, from English, that there's, you know, great means a lot of different things, you know? And the same thing is, I'm sure, in Spanish, there's several words. So it translates it to the way it's used in the question.
How many different languages you get built into that system?
I, I can't tell you yet, because the, the federal government gave us about 100 and, excuse me, a million and three-quarters for developing the translation. And our vendor is basically trying to do as many as they can with that amount of money. So right now, we're looking at, at a minimum of 19 languages, but we're hoping for more than that. And we
I think I've heard that Burlington, for example, has about, I think I've heard 200 different languages.
That, that's probably right. So what we did, since we can't cover them all, there are other options for, for students, but we polled all the 25 states and found out the most common languages, and we're just working down the list.
Work in progress.
Yeah. So, so for the first year, we're going to hit the big ones, and we'll be adding more as we go on. We also kind of have a deal going on for states to get together, and they can do some of the translation work for us, and then we'll build it into the system. So some states were, for example, North Dakota and Minnesota have this interesting population of people that speak a version of German, and there's a lot of them. And so, you know, it's, it's a fascinating language. So they're getting together now, and they're, I can't remember what the language is called, but they're, they're already working on a translation to that language. So anyway, I, this is something I think that's really special, and we've heard from the pilot testing we did last year, that there are kids that would never sit for a test before, who are now thinking, this is, this is pretty cool. But I'll, I'll tell you more about that. It's pretty exciting. This, again, is where I started. Most of our tests now are administered on paper, and interestingly enough, it costs a lot. It costs more to, to develop and ship and have kids take and then score a test on paper. The computers, it's much, much quicker, costs less, and it allows us to create a better test, so.
Are there, are there greater security features to S-Back compared to, I know, we haven't, I've heard, I've read a lot about security, you know, which is for Kneecap, but is it safer? Is it a more secure test?
Well, yes, that's, that's another advantage, and thanks for asking about that. Yeah, we, you know, that these, as you probably have heard, these tests are really expensive. And so one of the basic assumptions with testing is that students, when they sit down to take the test, are seeing those questions for the very first time. And so if, if our questions get out, and we've been pretty lucky with Kneecap, but if they get, if they get out into public eye, we have to throw them out. And for Kneecap, it costs us about $1,000 per question on the test. So we don't, we don't like to throw them away. Smarter Balanced is delivered on a, well, I always hesitate to say this, people say, yeah, 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 we heard about secure computers, but it's, it's administered on a secure internet pedestal, it's called, and it blocks out everything else on the computer while the student's taking the test. And so frankly, if a student can find a way to hack the way around that, they probably know more than what we're testing anyway, so they should give them a good score. No, that's not true, and I didn't say that. But yes, very, very secure. That's one of the benefits.
You can play it at the bar.
I can play it at the bar. There we go. Okay. And how are we different than Kneecap? Well, first of all, Kneecap measured a unique set of standards that we wrote with the other states that give the test with us. Rhode Island, Massa, Rhode Island, New Hampshire, Maine, and Rhode Island. That's a Rhode Island twist. All right. Four. Smarter Balanced is developed around the, the new Common Core standards that have been adopted by 44 states. And going down, this is a related thing, but the Common Core standards are about finding out if students are on track to be ready for college or career when they graduate from high school. Whereas our, our Kneecap standards were developed around the notion of whether students, year by year, were gaining the skills they needed to go on to the next grade level. And that, that's a very different way to look at both standards and at testing. We've talked already a lot about this, you know, the Smarter Balanced is web-based, Kneecap was pencil paper. Although we kind of delved into some computer administration with writing on Kneecap. This next thing, I, it's, it's one of the, I think, key features of Smarter Balanced, and I'm going to get into some detail on this in another slide, but it uses a new technology that's called computer adaptive testing, which is, is pretty exciting. So I'm going to save that and talk to you in, in some detail what that's about. Kneecap is what's called a fixed form test, meaning every student takes, at a grade level, takes the same set of questions. And one of the issues with that, and this is why computer adaptive is good, is that since you have a fixed form test, and we don't want the test to go on all day, we kind of restrict the questions that end up on the test to being sort of middle difficulty, where you would expect most of the kids in the school to be. But what that means is that for either your lowest-performing students or your highest-performing students, there's not much stuff up there. Whereas with computer adaptive testing, we have a large pool of items for the grade level that, that run the gamut of skills across a grade level, and the computer custom picks for each student a set of items that kind of matches where they're at. And I'll, I'll tell you more about that, but it's, it's a much better approach to delivering items. And frankly, it's, 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 it really pays off for students at the top and at the bottom, because it gives them more opportunity to show what they know. Here's a big difference, that Smarter Balanced is actually not just a test, it's, it's a system of tests. So it has a summative test, which is what Kneecap is. It's something we give kind of the end of the school year or, or at the very beginning of the school year, but it's supposed to sum up the learning that kids did after a certain period of time. It has this interim assessment, which is a tool that we're, we're buying for our schools to use the way they see fit. But it's, it's kind of a version of the regular state test that teachers can use in the classroom, and it will, they can give it several times across the school year, and can, they can sit down with parents and show them how their children did on the particular items and that sort of thing. So we think that's great. It's a nice tool, and we're going to leave it up to, you know, these folks here to figure out how to use it. But it's, it's, the questions on it are the same quality as the, the questions that are on the, the summative test, but they're for school folks to use. And then formative assessment is really, it's not a test. It's, it's going to be a library of professional development activities and examples for teachers to use to learn how to do kind of the minute-by-minute assessment that they do to, to pace their lessons, to decide if their kids are ready to go on, if they need to go back and reteach or something like that. And so that, that's a part of this package, too.
Can I ask a question around harvesting this information and its communication with our local assessments and our database system around student data management? Is there envisioned to be a statewide platform for that that makes sense, that the state would encourage or support?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a couple answers, all of them adding up to yes to your question. But, but first of all, the, the Kneecap, or, yes, excuse me, Kneecap, that's the other test. The Smarter Balanced scores will be delivered to schools through a digital platform that, that they can then import into the school's data system, whatever they use. If they use Power School or something like that. Pardon?
V-CAP.
Right. So, or V-CAP or others. So, so yes, in that respect. But also, the, the state of Vermont recently got a large federal grant to develop a longitudinal data system that, that schools will be able to access, and these test scores will be accessible through, through that. So there'll be two ways for you to get that. But yeah, one way or another, you'll be able to look at this data with your, your other data you're collecting in the district. And actually, we hope you do that, because I, I'm one of those people that even though this is my work, I would tell you, it's just, it's a snapshot in time of your kids, and you need to, I always kind of think that these tests are most useful helping, for helping us ask good questions rather than telling us the answers. And, and I think you need to look at all that, that other stuff, you know, that teachers are doing for assessments in, in the classroom. So it'd be great if we could bring that all together. Although one thing I do want to say, that, that what's, this is where we are in the S-Back work now, that looking at the, the reporting. And what they're working on now is, is going to be web-based and highly interactive, so that, that school folks will be able to go in and, and do analysis, so that it's not just a bunch of paper reports that you're going to get back. They'll, they'll be able to look at individual students and across items and so forth. I, I think that there's going to be lots of options for using the scores. Okay. So I, I already talked a little about item types, but because we're giving the, the test by computer, there's a lot of new technological things that we're able to do with the types of items that we do, that, that get away from the old fill-in-the-blank stuff. This is, this is big news for a lot of the folks in schools, but this is, this goes along with computer adaptive testing as well. And it kind of relates to Mark's question about test security. That to, to keep Kneecap secure, we, we had to insist that, that all the kids at a grade level at the school were tested at the same time, or roughly. So, so the students who didn't take the test can't talk to kids who did, so they can't share answers and that sort of thing. Well, because of computer adaptive testing, every student kind of gets a unique set of items, so we don't really care about that anymore, because they, there's no way they can cheat. You know, if I'm sitting next to Mark taking the test, he, he can look at my screen, and he's not going to be able, he's going to see something different than what he, what he's doing. So that, that, that removes a big concern about security, and it allows us to give more time for the, for the test to be given. So, yeah, now it's going to be 12 weeks in the spring, and I can't give you exact dates, because different, since we're working with 25 states, different states have different school year length and that sort of thing.
It's also in the teaching year, so we've, sometimes we struggle around that concept of testing year, teaching year, so that you're being assessed on the year that you've been taught.
Right.
Can I just ask a different question?
Of course.
So that, that doesn't mean that kids will be taking tests for 12 weeks.
No, it means
What's wrong with that?
No, no. I, I, thank you for having me clarify that. No, the, the test, the test is about the same length as Kneecap, and I have a slide that touches on that. But about a total of eight hours testing entirely, totally, and you have 12 weeks to give it. And, and you could do, you conceivably could, could test one kid at a time if you wanted to.
When does the window open up for testing? When is it, what's the window of testing?
It's going to be around the same as now, so, so mid-March. Mid-March through the beginning of June.
I'm sorry, did you say eight hours of testing?
It's going to be roughly eight hours of testing. And because of the way computer adaptive works, it might be slightly different by student, but that's the rough estimates of how long it's going to take.
So if the tests won't be administered until mid-March, and the results might not be available until April or May, doesn't that sort of negate the, the value of having that information during the school year? The school year will be wrapping up by the time schools get the results.
So another great question. And again, you're, you're asking things that I should think to say upfront, because that, that's an important point. One of the things, the nice things about giving the test on computer is that teachers will be able to see scores almost immediately on that part of the test. But if you recall, I said earlier that But i- if you recall, I, I said earlier that there are also performance tasks that are part of this. And so, and because our kids are taking it, that the final score that the state will be using for accountability purposes for schools won't come out till probably mid-July. But for individual students, that they can share results immediately, pretty much immediately.
So will inform teaching.
Yes.
Okay.
And tha- and that, that's another advantage, that, that you'll get something back right away. Okay. Oh, well, that's the next thing up here. That, that right now with the Kneecap, it takes about three months before you get anything back. But with Smarter Balance, there's a fast turnaround so that, and, and things will come out in phases. But the, the first information schools will get is almost immediate.
Michael, I just wanted to add a little bit what you were just saying about the Brandon's question. What was happening in the past with the Kneecap is that students are being tested, just use seventh grade as an example. They were getting tested on sixth grade material in their seventh grade year, and we weren't getting that information until February.
Right.
So to make, to make instructional-type decisions-
Right.
It's, even though this is the way it is, and I hear your question, that, those results are gonna be coming in April or May to be shared with next year's teachers or, or making immediate changes-
Right.
-to keep it going. It just makes, I'm looking forward to it. And the way this whole system-
More accurate sort of profile of the kid.
Right.
I think the only reason assessment is beneficial is to be able to inform instruction. So if that gets into that more quickly, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
Even for eight hours.
Oh, I, I agree. You know, we had, by the way, this was before I went to the department, so I, I can't take responsibility for this. But I, I think if we had something that we would have done over with Kneecap, we wouldn't have done fall testing. There was a really strong argument for it in the beginning. But what Kevin said, we've heard a lot, that, that-
We've gotten some feedback.
We've got some feedback on that. And, and you're, you're right, it should, you're right, it should be for, it should be for informing instruction. But technically, that's not what the feds had in mind. They had school accountability in mind, so. Okay. So anyway, if, if you're interested, that's Smarter Balance States. We have twenty-five members plus U.S. Virgin Islands. We cover, I believe, six time zones, because we go from Maine to Hawaii. And we tend to touch the coasts, except for, we don't know what happened to Rhode Island and Massachusetts, you know. They, they left us, but- Yeah, they're, they're, they went with-
And what about the states that, you know, there's sixteen and twenty-five, and that counts some territories. There's obviously some states that aren't part of either. Are they just doing their own?
That's right. Texas is, is not part of either. Alaska is not-
Virginia.
Virginia is not, Alabama is not at the moment. So yeah, there are some states that aren't part of either.
They're just doing their own.
That's what they're saying that, doing anyway, yes.
Do you foresee that if this would work out good, that the feds could dictate that every state do it?
They could. They haven't talked in that direction. They, they've, they've made it voluntary. What, what they've said so far is that states need to be moving to standards that assess kids on career and college readiness. And, and so they, they actually haven't required the Common Core either. And they haven't required people to participate in either of these assessments. But if you don't do Smarter Balance or PARC, you need to be developing your own test around this notion of career and college readiness. Okay. So I, I always think it's interesting, we call ourselves smarter and balanced, and so that's, I always wonder, are we? So this kind of goes back to things I've already said to you all a few times. But you know, that the idea was to develop a comprehensive and innovative assessments for grades three to eight and grade eleven, which was aligned to the Common Core standards. And the notion is that this will assist schools in preparing students for post-secondary success in either college or in careers. And there, there's, you know, there, there's a bit, a number of changes in, in the standards that will be reflected in this test that go along with that.
Is one of the hopes is that our, our secondary kids in eleventh grade will be more engaged in the testing process? Because what we hear anecdotally is they're sort of checking out and they don't see the value in it. But do we hope that there'll be more reliable sort of data that's coming out?
Yes, there's that. And also, I, I, we're, we're hoping that there's much greater buy-in from higher ed to this test. And, and so, so Smarter Balance in particular has made a real effort to involve higher ed faculty members in, in the test development. We have, on the executive board, of which I'm a member, there are two higher ed representatives that are elected by the states. And every state has a higher ed coordinator, and they set up regional higher ed folks. So at, at a minimum, we're setting things up so that students won't have to take like Accuplacer or one of those, those college placement exams, because we're, we're looking at this test in, in, in those terms so that colleges will use that. And I, I have a few folks at UVM that haven't thrown me out when I, I suggested they might be able to use this test. If they have a high enough score, they might be able to use it in place of ACT or SAT. So we're, we're, we're working on them. Okay, and I've mentioned this, so next spring at this time, we'll be talking about the real test happening.
So this doesn't delve down into the, what for us, the way we're structured, our lowest, lowest school is K through two. This doesn't delve down into, into that realm?
Starts in grade three.
Okay. But Common Core does.
Right, but we're not assessing at the EES level. Yeah, I, I think we, we sort of agree on this, that, that there's, there's a reason why we don't test down into the lower grades. That, that, you know, in, in the, the first three gates, kids' skills are kind of all over the place. Like, like they, they'll, they'll be slow to catch on in first grade, and then they give this big spurt and that sort of thing. So most of the researchers have shown that, that kids' skills begin to stabilize around third grade. So you really shouldn't start, I mean, you can test before that, but you, you shouldn't draw any big conclusions from testing with kids at that early age. Plus, what'd you say, if they don't get their Cheerios, they-
They didn't have Fruit Loops that morning.
I'm not taking a test. No Fruit Loops, no test.
And we make accommodations.
So I, I'm not gonna spend much time on this. Oh, by the way, I, I brought you something that describes all this. This is sort of a briefing paper and people pass that around. And I, I'm gonna send Mark this PowerPoint, so if you want a copy. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Michael, I'll save it to our T dress, so you don't need to-
Okay. You already have my presentation. Excuse me?
We have about fifteen more minutes for someone to make sure to turn the number slides.
All right. So let me just jump through this stuff. I've talked about these three things. I want to talk about computer adaptive testing, because this is one of the really cool things about this test. So this is, this is a very, very simplified version of how this works. But computer adaptive testing was actually developed originally for medical license or exams, which is kind of interesting. So probably, you know, if you go to get an X-ray or something like that, your X-ray technician may have got their license using this type of testing. It's also now used in the graduate record exam and the armed services vocational aptitude battery is now computer adaptive. But this is, this is basically how it works, that when the student sits down at the computer, that, that little man that lives inside the kid's computer grabs a test question that's at their grade level, kind of in the middle level of difficulty. And the student takes that question and they either get it wrong or they get it right. So if they get it right, the computer go fi- goes, the computer goes, guy goes and finds a slightly harder question and gives to the student. If they get it wrong, the computer guy goes and finds a slightly easier question. And it keeps doing that until it assesses the student across all the kind of sub areas within a, a content area, like, you know, give a little algebra, a little geometry and so forth. But it, so it keeps using this process until it gets the best estimate of the student's ability it can. If, if you've seen your students' reports, you know, you know, we, we report, we report the scores in a band of confidence. Well, what the computer guy does is he keeps delivering items until he can make that band of confidence as small as possible. And, you know, that may sound time-consuming, but actually, it's much quicker. Because right now, when, when your children take the test, if they're really strong students, we make them take, cut questions that are way below their ability level. So we kind of waste their time with that. Or if you're not one of the brightest students, we still make you sit down to a test where you can't answer many of the questions at all. But with computer adaptive testing, at least theoretically, and we'll, we'll make sure that this turns out this way in our field test. But at least theoretically, about half the questions the student gets, they will be able to answer. And about half they get, they won't be able to answer, until it shrinks down that band of confidence.
Is that part of the eight hours, Michael?
That's, that's part of the eight hours, yeah.
Every student has the same number of questions?
No, it might be different.
And then, so-
Is this test internet-based or software-based?
No, it's all internet-based. They, the, the schools have to download onto the computers our secure assessment platform that we've designed. It was designed by a group in Washington DC called the American Institutes for Research. So you download the, the secure browser for that, and then this comes in through the internet.
So it's not relying on the internet to actually take the test?
Well, yes, it is. It's, it's, it's web-based. So, so the AIR has, I believe, seven servers that will be delivering test questions to students.
But it depends on the internet connectivity tool.
Oh, yeah. Although, although I, if I use my fifteen minutes judiciously, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit about that, but yeah, that's-
I think you already answered the question.
But it, it should be fine.
It'll be okay in Essex, maybe not in other parts of Vermont.
Yeah, that's, that's-
And so since the, the way it does this, will teachers and maybe even parents have a better idea of different areas? So like right now, we see the scores in terms of math.
And then nothing else? Yes.
It'll, it'll break it down more so we can see, okay.
Let me just move ahead through that.
Okay.
Oh, there's- That there are your, your testing times roughly. And one thing I'd like to point out is, it'll take about the same amount of time as Kneecap took, but we're actually measuring more stuff. Because, and I, I think this is an important advancement in terms of being career and college ready, that right now, we only measure writing on Kneecap at three grade levels. This measures writing at every grade level in English Language Arts. It also measures listening skills and what we're calling research. So it's the ability that students have to go and look at different sources of information and research it. So that's getting more to your web stuff, too, you know, can students find answers to questions? So it takes about the same amount of time as Kneecap, but with a lot more stuff being measured. And that's throwing in those performance tests, too, that, that take roughly two hours. Okay. So this is your question. Kneecap, again, because of the way it was set up and the common item set, all you got was a reading score or a math score. As you'll see here, that, that actually, you'll get, in, in English Language Arts, you get four different scores, plus the broad reading score. And you can see what it's supposed to tell you, that, you know, the overall claim for three days, students can demonstrate that they're making progress, progress toward career and college readiness in English Language Arts and Literacy. But then you'll get a score for reading and another score for writing, another score for speaking and listening, another score for research and career. And here's what that looks like for math. So these are all the scores that you'll be receiving. Yeah, so more, more information, definitely. And then with the interim assessment, that you, you, you know, teachers can customize that and they could just look at algebra items if that's what you're interested in. Okay. Again, this is my baby, and all, all I can just say about this is that when I, when I started this work, I was at UVM at the time, and Vermont was just getting into the whole new standards exam stuff. And our state special ed director said, asked if I would be interested in helping the state figure out how to make these tests accessible for kids with disabilities. And it was really difficult back in the beginning, because people develop the tests without thinking about the fact that we have diverse learners in our schools. And then after the fact, we had to go in and try to figure out how to accommodate these kids. But this, this notion of access by design is one where we were there in the very beginning. And we worked with all the different committees and vendors to make sure that every part of the test was accessible for kids. And this'll just give you a, a quick idea of the way, the, the model, the way this is set up. That first of all, the, the test has something that are called universal tools. And these are things that are available to all students. And that, they're just, they're, they're just on there for all students to use. You don't have to have an IEP or anything like that. Then there are designated supports. And actually, the only, they're available to all kids, too. The only difference is that they're not turned on immediately, that the teacher has to say, I, I want this available to, to Michael. And I'll, I'll show you what's in those little boxes, 'cause I know you can't read them. And then there's just a very limited set of, of these tools that, there needs to be decision from an IEP team or a five oh four plan that calls for this. But I think when I show you what these are, you'll, you'll understand why that is. So anyway, on those universal tools, as I mentioned earlier, this is all the kind of stuff you, you already have on your computer that are gonna be available. There's gonna be, you know, an on-screen calculator and a dictionary, available glossaries, a, a highlighter. All those things. Strike through, there, there's a way, for example, there, there are some multiple choice questions. Students can go through and they can strike through the ones they know aren't the right answer. So that they, if they have to guess, they can just guess between the two they think might be a possibility, a possibility.
I presume they have to answer every question?
Well, they don't, but it's a good idea, too.
I, I can't remember whether SAT or ACT you're supposed to guess or not guess.
Yeah, no, 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 there's-
There's some like strategy with those, right?
No, on, on this, you're encouraged to answer. Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no guessing penalty. We want them to guess. Okay, so the designated supports, and again, the only difference here is that any student can have them. You don't have to be on the IEP, but to get those things, a teacher has to turn them on for you. And, you know, there's a lot of fun stuff, like color contrast. Some, some students with visual problems, they do better with white print on a dark background. I, myself, am partial to gold on red, which is a choice, but students have choices of what their, what their screen looks like. You know, we have full translations in Spanish and in American Sign Language. So if you, if your student is deaf and uses sign language as a, a little window in the bottom of the screen, and there's somebody signing all the questions for them. And I, I mentioned before that for the math tests, there's text-to-speech available so that for students who aren't strong readers, they can have the questions read. And this last one, this is a limited group of things, but they're, they're slightly controversial, but they're also things that have, need some special setup. So, like Braille, for example. There are some great tools now, like there's a thing, a device called Refreshable Braille that will take anything that's on screen and it automatically and instantly Braille's for the students. So students who, who are blind can have the questions Braille'd right out for them, and then they can type their answers in, back in in Braille. Probably, probably the one that we struggled with most, and I think we came up with a good solution, was allowing text-to-speech for some students in reading. And this was interesting, because when we first proposed this notion, no matter what we said we were gonna do, somebody hated it. So, but just very quickly, what we decided, and I'll tell you the reasons for this. We decided that in grades three through five, they could not use text-to-speech for the reading passages because the standards still cover decoding. And we, and also, we didn't want to send a mixed, mixed message to teachers that they can just decide kids are never gonna learn to read in third grade and, and that the test would send that message. So not allowed at that, at those grades. Starting in sixth grade, as long as an IEP team can certify that the student has a persistent reading difficulty, that they may use text-to-speech for the reading passages. And interestingly enough, in the Common Core, this is the reason we picked this grade for doing this, that at the Common Core, it no longer talks about decoding. And we heard from a lot of folks who have like PhDs, who are non-readers, who said, you know, to be career or college ready, you don't really need to read anymore. Because, you know, your computer has a text-to-speech reader and you can get most college textbooks. So, and we, we think that some, to some extent, it gives teachers the wrong message for high school to say, you have to keep plugging away forever to teach this kid to decode. That, that, we should never stop trying to teach kids to decode. But we should also be teaching them to use these tools that are available to people that just never get to be strong readers. And there are, there is such a thing as a learning disability. Some kids, no matter how hard we try, no matter how good the instruction is, reading never becomes a really strong tool for them in life. So, you know, but we should keep trying to teach them that, but in the- So, you know, but we should keep trying to teach them that, but in the meantime, let's let them use these tools.
But that, but if you're looking at those different four things of reading, it would allow you to assess for their comprehension, even if their reading ability doesn't match up to their comprehension ability.
That's exactly right. And, and you're right, because, and that's what the Common Core stresses, after sixth grade, it's comprehension, it's getting information from text. And there are tools to help you do that. So this will probably continue to be controversial, but I, I think that probably we're gonna change. Unfortunately, tests change things that educators sort of been able to change on their own. But if it's in the test, it'll get more attention, and maybe we'll start to think about what we mean by reading in broader terms as gaining information from text, more than just being able to know that B goes buh. Okay. All right, I, I know I'm out of time, so let me just do this, this is like my last slide, actually. Some things that I thought you folks might wanna know. This first thing, cost, I made the mistake of talking to a board member, not a whole board, but I said, "Oh, it doesn't cost you anything." And this was my neighbor, who's also a board member, he ripped me up on that one. "What do you mean, it's not gonna cost us anything? Our teacher's gonna have to give the test?" "Well, yeah, well, I cost us something." So anyway, what, what I wanna point out here is that all the direct costs for developing the test, for administering it, for scoring it, reporting, all, all the smarter balance stuff, is gonna be covered by the state of Vermont. So that there's no cost to, to your budgets for that. But there are, you do have responsibilities, and I, I can't tell you how much it costs, but I know that there are price tags on these things. So you need to, you need to provide the computers. You need to provide access to the internet. Because it has a listening test, you have to have headphones for the students. I don't, do, do you?
Earbuds.
Or, but earbuds, that's fine. Earbuds are great.
I just like saying that. It's sort of the vernacular.
I'll cha- I'll change my PowerPoint just for you. We, Smarter Balance will have technical support related to the assessment itself, but it's really good for the, the schools to have some kind of technological support for, like, downloading the test administration pedestal and that sort of thing. So you, you folks will have to provide that. You need to provide the, the staff to give the test, and you need to provide release time so that the teachers that are gonna be giving the test can be trained to do it. So I, and again, I know those are expenses you have to face.
Do you think every teacher will be giving a test in our grade?
Uh, you know, that, that depends on the school. I, I, that's the kind of stuff we leave up to.
Would necessarily be their home room teacher, or they're in the middle school, they're.
It, it could be, but that's, that's a local.
I guess, this year, Kim, it's gonna be done by all teachers. I don't know what it'll look like in years. I mean, once we get this twelve-week window, it could be done in many different ways.
What we're also realizing is all hands on deck, so there's ancillary support that teachers are gonna need, technology folks.
Yeah, 'cause you know, you know, one of the advantages here, and again, this is why I can't give you a direct answer, 'cause we're, we're gonna have to learn from this, this field test, and then probably from next year as well, that theoretically, the, the computer's administering the test, so you might be able to do with less staff. And I know one place where you definitely will need less staff is that with the read-aloud accommodations, just talking about, but accommodations in general, that's pretty staff-intensive stuff. But now, because the computer delivers it, you don't necessarily have to have a special educator sitting there with a student taking the test, or, or a pair of educators, or something like that. So we're predicting it's gonna take you less staff, but.
Is it synthetic voice, or is it a?
No, no, it, well.
Just curious.
No, it, it's.
It's not Siri?
It's not Siri. No. Oh, I'm sorry, what did I do?
Just curious.
Yeah, I know, what we, uh.
It's technological ready.
We're providing two voice packs, one for apples and one for, for PCs, and they're top quality.
Yeah.
Download to our system?
Yes.
Separately.
Yeah, so that they meet, they meet our specs. You can use your own if you want to, we're not requiring that. But you'll probably wanna use these, because they are, they are the, the kind of the best quality. Okay, so I, I talked about your responsibilities. Field testing, I mentioned this already, that, that this is all new technology. There, there's been about five or six states doing this already on a much smaller scale, that this is, this is big. Some people say that this is probably the biggest testing endeavor that's ever been done, so we'll, we'll see. But this is why we're field testing, because we have, there's a lot of stuff that could go wrong, and we wanted it to go wrong this spring, not next spring. As far as the technological readiness, this is one thing we did do ahead of time. Our, our schools have been filling out surveys for us, I think we're on survey number three. And actually, in Vermont, we're looking pretty good. The technology readiness looks at the number of devices that are available for students, the, the, the computer bandwidth, internet bandwidth, and whether or not they have technology support. And we only have two or maybe three schools in Vermont that won't be able to do this, given the fact that they have that long testing window, and they don't have to test everyone at once. And I'm not saying it won't be a challenge, you know, I, I keep talking to the folks at your high school, saying, "We have to run three hundred kids through this test," and I don't know how many you, you have, but it's a lot of kids, a lot of computers. But they're gonna work it out. And again, that, that's another thing we're gonna, we, we've set up webinars for after the field testing, so we can talk to school folks and find out what they learned. So it looks like we're pretty ready. I, I, I do wanna end with this one, 'cause I think this is important, that a lot of people have been asking us, like board members in particular, about buying new computers, and they have, you know, a five-year plan for acquiring more devices and stuff. And they wanna know, "Well, what do you need for taking S-Back?" And I would just strongly encourage you, and the experts have encouraged me to say this, that you shouldn't worry about the test for, for acquiring computers, that it, it's kind of middle demands in ter- in terms of, of what would be required. The key thing that you should be thinking about, all this great technology that's out there for learning. If, if you're looking at those things, then you're gonna be fine with the test. So, you know, plan your device acquisitions around, around what, you know, your, your tech folks are telling you they need for the classrooms, and they'll be fine with this test. And there's a few things on here, if you're interested, I'll just tell you quickly, that we have sample items, so you can see what the test items are gonna look like. And we have a student practice test, and when you get the PowerPoint, you can click on there. And it actually is designed to train the students on all the different little bells and whistles that are built into the test for them to use. And this, this, if you're interested, this is what your students will be seeing soon to get ready for the, the field test.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Will we be putting it up as a, not a PDF, so that it is linkable?
I'm gonna save it as a file, I'm gonna send it, it'll go as a PowerPoint.
Um, I think we're gonna attach it, we should attach it to the PDF.
PDFs, typical.
Well, PDFs usually have hotlines.
It, it, in them, so it'd be fine. So if this, I'm just thinking, this information is awesome information, and if the parent community is interested in this information.
I would, I would love it.
We'll write something up that, that sort of as a.
Highlights it and points them to the link.
Great.
And David, you tell him to email you directly.
Yeah, you know, if it comes up, I, I really appreciate this. But, you know, I just, a few weeks ago, did a, a presentation for the, the Vermont Family Center that focuses specifically on students with special needs. And there's a link on there to my smarter, our Smarter Balance website at the department. And you can get a, it was a webcast, so you can actually hear me talking through that, that PowerPoint, but just focuses on kids with disabilities. And Ellen, before you post that, will you change earphones to earbuds? Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time, Michael.
My pleasure. Appreciate being here. And I, I said thank you, I appreciate that your schools are helping the students field testing, it's gonna make all the difference.
That's fine. When the students click on it, they'll find that it's so much more fun. They won't mind so much.
Great, so we will move right into our next agenda item.
Good night, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
And turn it over to Mark for an update on our winter 2014 student performance data.
Thanks, Brenda. Find the presentation.
Okay.
That was informative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a question about, um, what he called accountability. And then I saw it's addressed in his handout. Always concerned about how these tests might be used to penalize schools.
We haven't really heard about that.
Yeah. It's interesting, I mean, what, what this, what the handout says is that, you know, the agency's approach is on helping address achievement gaps and emphasizing service and support, rather than monitoring compliance and enforcing sanctions. But.
Things change, too.
Do you know, Mark, as that's coming up, would this be part of, I know he's talked about a longitudinal data system that they have a grant for, is this part of the work that Rebecca Holcomb's spoken of, to come out of the Agency of Ed to try and align student performance with cost effectiveness and accountability?
Common set of indicators.
So is this envisioned to be part of that work, or is this the funding source for that work?
I can only assume that that's the, that's the plan, yeah.
The, it's not two separate things?
Yeah, because right now, we don't have a common student management system at the AOE, everyone's doing their own, own thing.
And she's spoken of that every single time I've heard her speak. And the need for that and the work, you know, focused her on that, so I just, I wanted.
It's a huge need.
To imagine that this was part of it.
How we doing?
Well, just, 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 just never mind.
Is your clicker not working yet, Mark?
That doesn't sound promising.
Let's move on to the next item.
Well, it's at the, it's at, it's at the bottom. We pulled it out already.
I will get it, I'll, yeah.
But isn't it living on the, the bar below?
I'm trying to save, I'm trying to save this presentation, but because he has his stick, it's not letting me.
Okay.
So just, just call yourself.
Maybe we'll have to send it to you.
So we have to get it from Michael afterwards.
Yeah, okay.
It's fine, you're here.
Thanks, Ellen. Good, I'm sorry for the pressure.
What button is it? Just this button?
No, that would be cool.
I'll just say, Mark, if it doesn't work for you, since it works for mine. You are out of that little clicker thing.
Well, see, she gave you a different one, you see that? You're using.
Switched it out.
It's a different clicker, I don't know, it's the Mark clicker.
Well, welcome to my colleagues here to my left. Thanks for coming out, because in large, I'm gonna do some introductions, some context setting, but I refer to Kevin and Peter and Joyce to share some winter data with you that is part of our local assessment plan. And we gave you a tour of that back in October, where we showed fall to fall, fall 2012 to fall 2013. So tonight, we wanna show you from, fresh off of our data walls in all three buildings now. Middle School now has a data wall for ELA and Mathematics, how our kids performed based on standards in the fall and where they are in the spring. So this isn't a monitor report, per se, it's just a progress report. But I felt it was much more powerful and discussion more rich if we had the building leadership share with you sort of their takeaways. So just to, as a refresher, data wall is not a new concept, but it's, it's new for us in practice. Peter jumped out first a couple of years ago with his faculty and started using formative assessment. And they'll talk more about what that assessment, what that assessment is, to determine where kids are, are, are on that continuum of underperforming to exceeding the standard. So it's really assessing student achievement across grade level and the school district. And now that we're doing it as a district, that data becomes even more, more helpful to us. It's a way to determine our effectiveness in terms of are our services and supports working? It's not just admiring data on the wall, it's, it's meant because it's so, it's so real, the grain size is small enough that we're allowed to theoretically make adjustments for the upcoming semester. So it provides appropriate educational opportunities for all kids. It's looking at all classes and categories of children, those with significant delays, and those kids who are more highly able. So it's the big picture of all, all children. And allows us always to identify what those professional development needs are to help affect student learning. Sorry for the overhead, for quality, but you saw this back in the October. Data walls live right in here. So this is what Michael talked about, big, you know, three million kids in the, in the, in the nation with S-Back, our local assessment plan, which Ellen has presented on in the past, those assessments that we have across grade levels that we're expected to do during the school year at certain, certain times. And this is really the, the formative piece, what teachers are doing daily in their classrooms that determines the overall rating that you'll see tonight. But it's a compilation, it's a combination of a number of different assessments that live right in here. And finally, it's the day-to-day stuff that teachers are doing in their classrooms around, ongoing, looking at student work. So it fits, it's a nested concept within, and it's part of a bigger system that we operate. Okay, who and what we're monitoring, it's the district, school level, grade level, classroom, and subgroup. So when we look at the data, it includes all of those, all of those pieces. So the three questions that Kevin and Peter and Joyce think about and engage their colleagues in while they're looking at those data, is where's, where has student growth occurred? And that's the first thing, you wanna see movement from left to right, or top to down, however the table's been created, making sure you're seeing movement each time we assess. What are the trends and the patterns that we're seeing? And they'll talk about how they, how they symbolize that in terms of what a card looks like, what is on a card, gender, area of, of grade level, those sorts of things. But we wanna see where, where those patterns exist within each of those, those groups. Are there any surprises? So we're gonna talk about those. And again, what are the interventions, programs we need to tweak, or change, or overhaul, we hope not, to affect learning in the spring. So we're, we're in tour, but wanted to just, again, set the context, that these are real data that we use to help inform, as Kim said, inform instruction for the upcoming semester. Okay? So I'm gonna start with the elementary school, 'cause Peter always wants to go first. And Peter, this is.
I don't wanna take directions from you. So, I, I think so. All right. Hi, everybody.
Hey.
You're getting your share of assessments tonight.
Can I have your PowerPoint for you?
So what we're looking at here is, this is the literacy data. Both the literacy and the math data that we're gonna talk about is based on our assessment windows. That is sort of the, the, the very basic building block where we start from are the assessment windows. The basic, the building block for the literacy really is our DRA scores. That's where we start, is by looking at DRA scores, the developmental reading assessment. The proficiency levels on the left are determined based on targets that are predetermined targets for each of the grade levels, reading levels. So if you look, we don't do DRAs in kindergarten in the fall. But if you look at kindergarten winter, a proficiency of four is, is a text level of three or four. A proficiency level of three is a text level of two or three, and two and one is really a zero or a one. And then it goes across, so in first grade, in the fall, we're looking for a target of three to four. In the winter, we're looking at first grade, we're looking at a target of eight to 12. So those targets keep going up according to the, according to the reading level, and the proficiencies are attached to those. So what we see, what, what, one of the things that we've learned is that our, our kindergarten targets, and I just had this conversation, actually, the kindergarten team and I have talked about this for the past almost a year, is looking, we, we are no longer looking at proficiency levels when we examine kindergarten data, we're looking at text levels. Because what we've realized is we need to increase, we need to bump up our end-of-year targets, our reading level targets. Because, and you'll see it here, there is a significant increase in first grade winter, students who are underperforming. And what we have found is that the, the end-of-year target level for kindergarten is a reading level three or four. If you are reading at a level four, you have a, between a seventy-five and an eighty percent certainty of making the target in the winter of first grade. If you're reading at a level three, you have a fifty percent. It, it's a fifty-fifty. So, so the conversation has been to increase the, increase the end-of-year target. And that will increase the beginning of the year target at first grade. What it's enabled us to do, though, is when we're no longer looking, when, when we stopped looking at proficiencies and started looking at reading levels, we noticed kids falling behind much sooner than winter of first grade. We started seeing them in the, in, not in the fall of kindergarten, but in the winter of kindergarten. If, so if you look at proficiency two, kindergarten winter, twenty-eight kids performing at proficiency two. Though if you look at just the, the technical, technically, those kids actually are proficient, according to VCAT. And so that needs, we're gonna go in, and that needs to be changed in VCAT. We've held off on doing that, only. We've held off on doing that only because we wanted to have a collection of data to look at from year to year. So one of the things will be to change the targets in VCAT and the proficiency levels in VCAT. So, uh, tomorrow, is it tomorrow? No, the next day, uh, on the twenty-sixth, I'm going to be meeting with the, we'll be meeting with the kindergarten team, uh, to look at, again, it's a, it's a follow-up to the needs assessment, um, which was held, uh, in January, we held the needs assessment, and for, I can tell you, for virtually every one of those children who is underperforming, there is a plan in place, whether it's a plan that's administered by, uh, Title One person, a classroom teacher, or a special educator, um, to address the needs that were identified in the needs assessment, where we, we sit and go through every single child in the classroom, where are they at, what are their strengths, what are their challenges, and then for those kids who are underperforming, come up with a plan that's being, uh, addressed either by the classroom teacher, Title One, or special educator to bring those kids up. So I'll be meeting with, uh, Title One, Special Ed, and each of the, uh, kindergarten first and second grade teachers to review those plans, look at fresh data, we'll do that in front of the data wall, and we will make adjustments, um, and we're looking always to make adjustments to the right, which is the, or to the proficiency.
So what are the, when you look at that table, Peter, what were the first, sort of, sort of first things that sort of jumped out in you and your, and your teams? What are some things that you-
It, what, what, the same, what always, what jumps out is that, um, is that increase from, uh, the fall in first grade to the winter in first grade of kids who are struggling, um, which is what, which has been what has generated that discussion around changing those targets. We, we raise the targets in kindergarten, at the end of kindergarten, we therefore raise the beginning targets in first grade, those kids officially on VCAT are, uh, recognized as, as, as in need of help, um, long before winter of first grade.
So again, more intervention sooner.
Yep, yep, more intervention sooner.
It wasn't a surprise then, what you saw.
No, it wasn't a surprise. What, what is always, um, interesting, and we haven't really sort of fleshed out how this is happening, is that the second grade, fall and winter, um, over the last several years, has shown significant increase in proficiency levels, um, and it, it, whether that is the incredible hard work of the second grade team, whether it's some of the maturation of children, it's, it's sort of hard to really pull that apart. I think, you know, Michael talked about, you know, the, when they talked about bringing standardized assessment to the lower grades, they were all like, oh, oh. So it, it's, it becomes difficult to really pull that apart, but it's a, it's a trend that we see year in and year out, is that increase. Let's see. Uh, this, the, what is, what's new this year is we've, we have had the, uh, the assessment windows for a long time, we've had the needs assessments, um, after each of those assessment windows for not as long. What is brand-new this, uh, this semester, this go-around, is the follow-up to those needs assessments. So, uh, getting together with teachers and looking at those interventions, what's working, what isn't working, um, so that we can either move children out of intervention and back into their regular classrooms, or pull other, and, and pull other kids in if we're not seeing it, or reexamine what it is we're doing for interventions.
Is the data wall, or this block, certainly is around literacy? Is the, does the data wall follow them for anything other than literacy behavior or math, or-
You've seen math in the next one.
Yep, yep, it's, right now, it's, it's focused on literacy and math, um, but each, each card that's on the data wall is representative of a child. Each card is color-coded, so we have, uh, green or yellow, uh, male or female, and then each card has stickers that indicate, um, either IEP, uh, socioeconomic status, um, Title One services, either in literacy or in math, um-
Learning plan?
Learning plans, uh, ELL, so there's different color codes, so you can have some kids who have, you know, three or four stickers on there. What we're finding, what, what I was noticing today, sitting in front of the data wall, was, um, where the, uh, blue is IEP and, uh, red is English Language Arts or Math Support, and what I'm seeing are, uh, several cards that have a red circle, and then on top of that is a blue circle, which means that we went to the, uh, to the, it's, it's the tiers of intervention. We went through Title One, we went through intervention with that child, and it wasn't, it wasn't enough, and so that child's gone into a Special Ed, onto an IEP.
Just, uh, quickly, Peter, we talked about the achievement gap and how it relates to kids, um, based on socioeconomic status.
Mm-hmm.
When you look at this data wall, what's the breakdown or the gap, if there is one, between male and female? In other words, do we see more of the, whatever the color is for boys, do we see that more in the three, four, are we seeing that more in the two, three?
You know, I, I, off, off the top of my head, I, I, I really can't pull the picture up in my head of it. Um, they, my sense is they're fairly evenly dispersed. Um, I think in math, you tend to see more boys at the lower end, but it's not-
What I'll do in the spring is, Ellen and I had a quick little discussion, is to show you the picture of the data wall.
Sure.
I brought one too.
You brought, okay.
Yeah.
I don't mean to be pushy, but we have math, we also have-
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious, as you, as you look at, uh, okay, we're, you know, intervene soon or doing that kind of stuff, is there, what resources are we bringing in for that? Are we bringing in anything from outside, are we doing this all in-house? What's-
Well, we have, um, we have math consultants that are working with grade level, who are working with classroom teachers, that are, that are making them more capable of providing intervention in their classroom. We have our Title One, both, uh, in math and language arts, um, we have special educators who can use a certain, uh, a certain proportion of their time to work with kids who are on EST plans.
Literacy coach.
We have a literacy coach, um, we have the Vermont Reading Initiative working with, uh, our kindergarten and first grades, um, so we have a, a significant number of resources.
And teachers.
And, and the teachers, yes.
Right.
And that's, and that's a, a significant, um, I, I would say a significant, uh, improvement is that we, we really are looking at that frontline, that first, that first direct instruction as being the key, it's really the key, and it's when that is not, when that is not getting the results that you want, that we then start moving into, uh, you know, other levels of intervention. Um, it, it's, you know, I, I, you know, there were, there were years, and I, I won't say here, but there were years where you went to, teachers went to EST and said, he's just not getting it. And that was sort of the, the summation of the issue. We sit in these needs assessment now, and, and you talk with teachers, and, and I can ask a teacher, I could pull any child out of a hat, really, for, in that class and say, tell me about Johnny, and they'd say, well, he's reading at this level, and he's really working on, he's struggling with this, and he's doing da, 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 but I know that he's doing this, and so if I can just get this into place, I think, I mean, it is kaboom, 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 kaboom.
And, and that's evidence in part of the result of having the literacy coach working with them, so they understand more of what they're looking at?
It's the result of having the literacy coach working with them, it's the result of them also immersing themselves in this kind of data and looking, you know, really looking at what, what can I do right now to move this child, as opposed to, you know, he, he's probably going to get it.
Yeah.
So.
To Mark's point with the-
Yep.
Yes, no, I'll shut up.
All right, Mark, which one?
Would you like me to show you?
This is our math data. Math data is based on, um, math data is based on, uh, math screeners that we put together at the end of the summer, beginning of the school year. Erica Moy, our Title One math person, and TJ Jemison, um, our math consultant, were the primary, uh, architects. It, it is based on, uh, their sort of looking at the Common Core state standards and figuring out, you know, partway into the year, what do we think a, a child should know at each of these grade levels? Uh, halfway through the year at the winter assessment, what do you, what do we think? And then in the spring, what do we think? Now, there's no fours, because that was not one of the options, it's, it's a, it is not a four-level scoring, it's a three-level, because we're looking at, um, in, so for instance, in the winter of kindergarten, um, we sort of looking at the Common Core, because our, we didn't have our curriculum frameworks in place yet, and the teachers hadn't designed their units off of that, we said, okay, so what, what do we think a kid should be, have mastered at this point? Um, not how far beyond have they gone. So it was up to what we thought they should know at that point, so it's a one, two, three, as opposed to a one, two, three, four. Where it got tricky is when we, particularly when we went to administer the winter, uh, the winter math assessment screeners, what we found, where we had gotten the, the, the curriculum frameworks, uh, mostly in place, teachers were writing units about, you know, attached to those curricular frameworks, and then they were finding, they were sitting down with the assessment and saying, there are three questions on here that are related to a unit that I'm starting next week. Um, and we had, uh, we had sort of fallback plans, if, if X, you know, if this student doesn't perform at this level, then we need to go in and do a, a, a deeper assessment, but we didn't want to be going in and doing a deeper assessment on every single kid at the grade level, because they hadn't had that unit yet. So the math, uh, the math scores, uh, the, the, the way we're looking at math, I think, is going to be tightened up considerably next year, uh, and actually this spring, I'm, I'm thinking it'll be tighter than it was before, but at next fall, it should be a lot tighter.
So right now, we still have Common Core curriculum? We don't, we don't have that going yet.
No, we do, we do, yeah. We, and, and we had, and we had Common Core as the, as, the Common Core standards were the basis of what we've been doing all year, but we didn't have it, um, formalized into the curriculum frameworks from which teachers were then writing units. They were kind of writing units, you know, like, whoa, okay, now, now the next one, as opposed to having it laid out in that framework. So having it laid out there and teachers able to write the units based on, okay, we're heading into, we're heading into this unit.
Next year, next year, now the, uh, this year.
Yeah.
They'll have that in place.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes we talk about, um, you know, we're, we're so busy bailing the boat that we can't fix it. We, we really, right now, we're feeling like we are at a point where we can really start moving forward.
Well, this, and this data shows, I think what it shows is really good progress in each of the grades, in some cases, very significant jumps in the level three, or the, or the decrease in the level one, or, so, there's a lot of good news on this slide.
I think there is a lot of good news on this slide, but I also, I, I have my own worries about when, when we take, um, you know, two items out of an assessment, because we haven't gotten to that unit yet, and then we have to sort of refashion how we score that because of those two items.
Right.
It, it, it tells me that we're pointing in the right direction, but it doesn't, like, give me something to stand on really firmly and say, oh, yeah, we're, it's there.
But presumably, with the lessons, with the plans, or, I'm gonna get the wrong words, but, that, that they've now been working on that for this year, the scheduling or the timing or the assessment will reflect what will have been covered.
Yes.
And this is just more the timing of the-
Yeah.
Situation.
The district math committee is going through all of the frameworks to get that flow, and so the whole system of our assessments now needs to get revamped, um, especially for math, because we've had very different assessments at each of the three schools, and now what we need to do is align them better. So, um, what Peter's talking about will actually take place with the math committee this spring into the summer to kind of get that going.
Peter, thanks, and, and, again, good stuff, but, I wanna-
Yeah.
It's Kevin's favorite.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Basketball's not on tonight. Um, I did bring a picture of the wall, just to remind you of what it looked like at Founders last year, I mean, in this, it's third, fourth and fifth, and it's fall versus spring, um, fall versus winter, fall versus winter, fall versus winter, and you can see how the students are gradually pulling themselves over from left to right.
You touched it wrong.
There it is. The white one is a math, and I'll, so, okay, and there's a, there's a reason why they're two different colors, there's a, there's a reason. The literacy data, um, starting here at Founders, um, shows really good growth. Um, the one area of concern for me is fourth grade, and fourth grade has been our struggling as a whole group of, of students, doesn't mean that some students cannot, you know, are not getting it, we're just not seeing the level of growth that we do, they're just coming along slowly. There again, if you look at our third graders, I think our third graders are really wonderful performers, and, um, they showing it, and, you know, in, in level four, you're going from twenty-two to forty-one percent of the students, um, had a, a distinction. Just want to tell you, because we don't give DRA to every grade, I take whatever fall assessments the students are getting, I mean, the, the winter assessments the students are getting, I compare it against report card growth, grades, and triangulate it with KNECAP, because I want to make sure that I'm staying within the realm and, and being true to the scores that I'm, that we're actually giving each child. Here at Founders also, every student who is in level one and level two has been identified, um, for some intervention of some sort, um, be it IEP, um, EST, Title One, um, and they are, there are, they are showing, it's, it's fun to watch a teacher when they'll come and say, gee, you know, so-and-so is meeting at level twelve, and now they're at level twenty-four, and all that work is finally paying off. Um, the trends and, and, like I said, the, the pattern that I'm worried about is, um, is the fourth grade, and the trend is students are moving from ones to twos, twos to threes, threes to four, and also, um, one thing that doesn't show there, what would show on my wall, is that my free and reduced population in literacy made approximately twenty percent gains, um, when they were taking the DRA in the winter from when they did it in the fall. So that was, that was really nice growth.
Is that in all grades?
In all grades, all three grades. All, all student plans, I, I visit with each team of teachers, um, every other week, and we review all the students who are IEP, ELL, um, EST, and, um, on team strategy plans. And team strategy plans really are at the, the classroom level, beginning to look for other interventions, and then working toward EST, and as Peter was saying before, you can tell on the cards that we have students who may be on an IEP right now, who were EST before, who were team strategy, so they've gone through the system, and I think it's a much more, um, efficient system, ever since we started, um, working with, um, with Jessica Little in the multi, multi-tiered system support, that MTSS stuff that we did at best. Does anyone have any questions on the literacy data? Our literacy data is pretty strong.
Joyce, do you think that the, 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 um, difference in the total, the N size in grade four fall and grade four winter had an impact?
That is, that's an error, it should have been one twenty-five, I didn't find that until tonight, that the fall should have been one twenty-five and not one twenty-four. Yeah, when I was adding up the numbers to-
Wait, so, I guess my point is still, so if one thirty-five is correct?
No, one twenty-five, it's one twenty-five.
Okay, gotcha.
So it, it is apples to apples.
Okay.
And that was just an adding error on my part. Mark, call- Mark called me for numbers, and I was out sick the day you called me for numbers. No, no, it's not blaming you at all, I'm blaming Joyce.
On this choice, that cohort, did they struggle in third?
They did struggle in third.
So, we've been watching this cohort.
We, we've been watching this cohort. I don't know, I wasn't available second to third, but I looked at the third grade data before I even came in last summer, and it was a struggling cohort.
I think if you recall, our Kneecap presentation last month, we celebrated the third grade performance, which has been, we think indicative of the work that's been going on.
Yeah, and I really think that the elementary school did an incredible job with the incoming third graders, not that they did with the fourth graders or didn't do with the fourth graders, but it's very indicative of what they're, what they're doing. Yep, I can slide to math. In math, what I did here was, once again, like Peter, we don't have a math assessment that's been used over time, which is why my data wall was all in white, because I didn't want to affirm any part of it except saying that a zero score versus a fifty score, and this is how students did. My area of concern is fifth grade because fifth grade didn't make any growth. It's, if you look at it, it's twenty-nine to thirty, thirty-two to thirty, twenty-three to twenty-seven. You know, it's one student either way, it's really, really flat. And so, there's a lot of questions. I know this is their first year of teaching the math Common Core. So, it could be just the first time students have seen a Common Core-based assessment that might have been worded a little differently than what they're used to in the past. Fourth grade here, however, I mean, they went from an average rating of two-point-one-two to three-point-two-two. And that was pretty incredible.
It's a huge jump.
And, you know, and the third graders again started high moving up. So, but my question, my question there is, you know, just keeping an eye on those fifth graders and making sure that there's some growth and, and them becoming more accustomed to looking at things through the Common Core and not through standards, previous standards based. But pretty happy with Founders. I mean, all, all classes are just progressing through the proficiencies. Subgroups are progressing. You ask boys versus girls, that's one of the first questions I always ask. It's a fifty-fifty, forty-eight, fifty-two, forty-nine, fifty-one.
Right, right, okay.
And I, there, and that's true of math and of literacy.
Okay.
There are not an unusual number of our students who are socioeconomically not as advantaged. And they're kind of spread across proficiencies one, two, three, four. I'm not saying there isn't an achievement gap because there is, but it's, it's much more dispel, dispersed as opposed to what I've seen in the past.
But what you won't see in Kneecap is necessarily that they're making progress, but your data wall.
Right.
Yeah.
It allows you to see a smaller grain size.
And it was, it was really interesting because I, I went back to the first trimester report cards to compare the first, the fall data. And then I went to the second trimester report cards to look at the, the winter data. But I, then I also pulled in the Kneecap because I didn't want to be that far off. And I needed something that I could triangulate against that would actually have been calibrated. And so, that's how I came up with, with the scores that are there. So, I feel very, very comfortable with those, they're pretty accurate.
It reminds me that, you know, I think we had a, a general, our general reaction to some of the Kneecap data was sort of concerned. I think was the overriding sentiment around this table. And this paints a different picture. And it just reminds me of the importance of, of looking at other data, not just one data set, to sort of gauge your.
And you've already had your Kneecap presentation, but at Kneecap, in, in certain subgroups or certain subtests were what really yanked the scores down. So, we may not have done that much in geometry or that much in, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of, of an area of ELA.
Right.
There might not have, has been as much focus on that one by October. You also get natural summer regression, I know every school does. But you get the natural summer regression. So, an area, if you look at the, the Kneecap data, I found that there were specific sub, subtests that were not as powerful as, or as strong as some of the others.
So, our friend Kevin, I want to just start by acknowledging that the middle school is different in a way, not only because of the age of the kid, it's also content oriented. But also, they don't have, their reporting system is not at this point standard-based. So, what you'll see, Kevin, as you've reflected a lot with me in terms of what these report card grades tell us, because we're not at that point yet, but we will be. Because we want to make sure that kids leaving fifth grade and entering sixth grade, we're measuring the same standard and representing that in similar ways. But so, the presentation's a little bit different. But I appreciate his leadership, as we all do, in terms of he has the wall up. Part of the club, we are moving in the right direction. With excitement, I must say.
Okay, enough, come on, let's go. Way late. All right, so here we have, you know, I did A, B, C, D, I went off the report cards. And one of the things I want to just begin with is that, that's not four, three, two, one. And there's a major difference between A, B, C, D and four, three, two, one. When you think of four, three, you think of proficient and proficient with distinguished, or distinguishably proficient. That's not accurate. There's, I, I'm not, I would say that in the first trimester of seventh grade, only nine kids were below proficiency. And that's, I don't think it paints an accurate picture of, of the student as, as an academic learner. What, what these paint is a picture of, of a whole student. Because a lot of these will take into account homework, they'll take into account effort, they take into this whole thing. So, that's where your A, B, C, Ds come into. I think more importantly than what you see up there is what you aren't seeing, which is back in my room, my office, which has all the cards laid out. Brandon, you asked a question about boys and girls. When people walk in, the third question on mark sheet is what surprises you? And I've seen more mouths drop in the last week than I've seen in, in three years. Sixth grade, trimester one, there's forty-six cards in As. And out of that, there are fifteen green cards, which means that two-thirds of the As were girls. One-third were boys. Accurate, I don't know, maybe it was. But it's just, it's how, how surprising was the word I think you used, what surprises you? If you look, I mean, you can, we can slide across if you wish, but I think on the next slide, Mark, I just want to point out there's, in the math, in eighth grade, you'll notice that it gets greater in terms of the CDs and Ns. There's a greater number now. You would also notice on the, on the chart, more green dots, which is your socioeconomic kits, the kids that are receiving free and reduced lunch. And we know that data shares with us that students who are in low economic status have a difficult time doing homework. And if you're counting homework as part of your grade, regardless of if you know the not, if you know it or not, it's, you're going to come down. So, you're going to start to see that. This has been such a great conversation starter that, of, of what are we really doing? What are we really assessing? What is it that we're, we're asking? So, this week, actually tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Cascade team, which is our seventh grade, Language Arts and Math, and just having a conversation about those kids. They, later on, I have sixth grade, but we'll be doing all, or I'll be doing every team walking and working away through over the next couple of weeks, having that conversation. What is, the Cs, Ds, and Ns, those, those kids, there's, in trimester one and sixth grade, there's nine. The question is, what are we doing with those kids? The sixty-six kids in the top, what are we doing to expand their knowledge? What are we doing to challenge them? You know, there's, so this has been, it's been exciting. Today, we were, I found out today, while we were at the, in the bistro, all of us here, actually, we're in the bistro.
Working hard.
Working hard.
All day long, sweating.
The bistro is not quite a bistro. But anyways, we were there, and Kim Mayberger told me that three teams came down today because they knew that we were going to be looking at this the next couple of weeks and stuck into my office to want, to want to get a glance at to what it was. And she was going through what all the, the cards color meant and all the dots meant. So, there's some real eagerness about this. Now, we do have a team, the Edge, that uses standard-based. And I chose not to put them up here because it would have singled them out. I didn't want to, I didn't feel like that was fair to. There's, you, you couldn't tell here which team is which. And if I was to do that with the Edge, then it would be, I felt it would be just too much for them.
So, those thirty-ish kids are just not in this at all?
They are not, because they are a four, three, two, one group. Yeah. And it doesn't, it doesn't match. You know, an A is not a four. So, yes, Dave.
I know of a kid who, I don't know which grade, I think it might be eight. But according to a parent, shall we say they're quite lax on homework, perhaps even to the non-extent version. And yet, on tests, they score very well or excel. Where does a kid like that fit in on the scale?
That's a great question. So, I went to a conference that Laurie Singer, the principal of ADL, and a lady, I apologize, I don't remember her name, Emily, from CVU, I don't remember her last name. But they put on a conference around standard-based grading. And the principal of CVU shared a report card that was about maybe thirty grades long, we'll say. And it was a child that received a B, okay? And on there, there were maybe six tests. And every test, this young lady got a D plus. And in between that, she got As in every one of her homework. And he said to me and to the group, he said, does she really deserve a B? I mean, does she really show that she is at a proficient level, even though she was a D plus in every test? And the answer is no, she's not. She's not proficient. She was a wonderful homework. And, and my guess is, and knowing the father, she probably got a ton of support at home and did phenomenal work on her homework, but it didn't carry over. And, and the tests were designed in multiple different ways to, to try to, you know, capture that learning. It wasn't like there was a standard multiple choice test and you weren't going to do it. There were all different types of, of ways of assessing. She just couldn't, she just didn't have the knowledge to get that. So, I, I'm here, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Dave, what it might be, but it depends on the team.
But in my scenario, for talking purposes, a kid is outright bored with homework
Yep.
because he outright knows the material.
Yep, yep. And we had that conversation last year with the, I saw a kid who scored a four on Kneecaps. Okay, he was one of our, our top scorers. And he got an N. And I said, really? How can the kid who scores the highest in our school fail? Well, he didn't do his homework. And I said it again, how can the kid with the highest score on Kneecaps fail? And the teacher looked at me and he said, he won't fail next year, or, or next trimester.
Can I have a talk with you when we go out the door?
Probably talking about the same kid.
That's what I'm thinking.
So, one question I have is, I think with ES and FMS to some degree, the Kneecap scores, if you can, you know, they sort of translate a little bit to be like, okay, well, this makes sense, you know, given where our Kneecaps ended up. Are you seeing the same kind of alignment with these, this analysis, which is, which is new?
Well, I guess, sure, I mean, if you look at it, we didn't, we didn't take the Kneecap this year because we're taking ES back.
That's right, I'm sorry, yeah.
But if you look at the history, it's around, was it ninety-one percent of our students are around reading proficient? And I guess if we were to go back, in, in eighth grade, so if we were to go back one, there's, you're looking, there's ninety-two in eighth grade trimester one. So, yeah, it's pretty close. But is that really proficient? I mean, that's the question, right? So, at the, and the math was around eighty-five, eighty-seven is what we normally end up with. And I can see, I mean, trimester, it's just about that, you know? So, yeah, hit or miss.
So, we want to talk about, we have a team that's been working with the higher ed collaborative. You've been doing some work outside of that work in terms of moving towards a standard-based reporting. So, if you want to talk a little bit about your vision in terms of when.
Well, we need to talk about our vision first. So, yeah, I'll be happy to share that out loud here, Mark. Right, no, there, there's a goal from the district that we are aligned, K eight with a standard-based report card. And, and I think that's a, that's a phenomenal goal. The, the, for the beginning of next year. When I shared that goal with people at, at this meeting I was at, they said.
You mean like in August, September?
So, they, they recognized it, there's a, it's a pretty large task to, to take. I, I don't, we'll talk more about it, but it just makes sense. It accurately portrays who the student is. I, I, there is a question around grades and the importance of grades, and, and does that motivate kids? And there's a, there's, there's research on both, both ends of that. So, we're, we're moving in that direction.
Do we have, do we have a sense that there is any collaboration happening at the high school? Because I'm thinking about proper placement of students when they hit high school. What will the four be to anybody or three mean? Educating parents around the topic.
Yeah, that's a great question, Kim. And all of those are being taken into consideration.
Combustible.
I don't like that word.
Let me share, let me share.
They require time to educate.
CVU is, when I was, I was told, CVU is a standard-based, using a standard-based report card. The reality is, one-third of CVU is using a standard-based report card, and it's growing. So, it's, it's being done more in organic fashion. Essex High School had representation at this meeting. They, in, in a, not next year, but the year after, are planning on going to a standard-based report card. My guess is, it'll be very similar to that of CVU in a very organic way. They'll, they'll grab some people, they'll pilot it, they'll pull it together. You'll start to see where it's really beneficial, and then you'll, you'll start to grow on its own. So, I, yeah, and, and in terms of colleges, that's, that's the, that's the bigger question. And every guidance counselor that was there said they have talked to the, to the, to the colleges that, that the kids choose, CVU's was there. And every college says they take these as more valuable than they do of grades.
But here's the workaround, the workaround, that shouldn't, all of what you ask, all really important, but there is a workaround, the workaround is that we're, we are reporting out on kids' mastery of standards, not whether or not they attained the A. Because I'm, I believe the research is sound around kids aren't motivated by grades. They're motivated by, did I, did I meet that standard? And being really clear and explicit about what that standard is. So, we might be able to have two systems that are parallel. If it is about grades, because that's how we place kids into ninth grade. That said, I think we have to now have a, an orientation around, well, what does it mean to meet a math standard? And I think we could have, I think they could coexist if that's the direction that we wanted to take. But I wouldn't want to get hung up or be stymied by that sort of belief that grades are important to the high school because we'll never get to the standard-based reporting, which we really have to get to. And we, we're doing some work with the higher ed collaborative, a small group of us. And one of the educators who joined us, this was our first meeting, they puzzled over what a three was. And that was the question here, as an experienced educator with probably ten years of experience, when the question was poised, you know, what does a three look like? They, it didn't, it didn't roll.
And that is encouraging and ungratifying, that might be for a parent in trying to help identify where they can help their kid. And so, when it's rich and deep and it is well-defined, it's amazing. And you can see that in rubrics when you get projects that your kids are working on. They know exactly what they're targeting for, if they're going for that four. They, you know, in practice and what they're doing in their classroom, they know what it looks like, smells like, tastes like, they know how to get it. And they're motivated by it. But the, the slightly more macro level, while it may be informed by that, would be harder, I think, to grasp for parents to engage and understand without somewhat of a learning curve for people to understand, and probably for proper placement and, and things if we're working sort of into a different system. So, I could see excitement around that possibility, but I can also think of not to pick on specials or, or whatever. When you get your kid's, you know, art report card and it says threes all the way down, it, it doesn't, it's not very informative, you don't really know what you're looking at.
And example, what I use, it's not that teachers don't know what a three is, but when you put teachers of similar content together, puzzling over what do you think a three is, that's where the rich dialogue comes. People stand in front of the board and say, or the, the data walls, I mean, what does it mean to you? You're going to get different perspectives.
And on the flip side, we, that report card could have said B.
Yeah. And you still wouldn't know much.
All right, but it got to be, you know, so it's really, it's really tricky. The thing that I, I looked at many models the other weekend. And the model that I really resonated the most with was one that actually informs more often. So, instead of waiting until the trimester, it's a unit. So, you're, after you finish your unit, you report out. And in there, it breaks down what the learning targets were. Maybe there's a grade, and this particular one, there's actually a grade and standards. So, it really worked. Then at the trimester, then you receive a trimester grade or, or the standards. Then at the trimester, then you received a trimester grade or, or a, the standards, but yet you had a more clear picture of what that really meant. So that was, that was the one that I personally liked. And well, as a, as a school, the ones that, or as a staff, the people that I've shown it to, maybe I've shown it to the right people, purposely. But they, uh, they also felt the same way, that that really makes more, the most sense.
Now, and speaking of conversation, is ADL on this conversation?
Yeah, ADL is very much on this conversation.
So, so we're, we are aligning with our other middle schools that we're gonna ma- meet with in high school. So hopefully, we're all coming into the high schools similar.
We are meeting, we're meeting similarly, right. We're, we're meeting in a, in a standards-based world. Uh, what that might look like may look different. And both Lori and I have had conversations for the last two years, that neither one of us wanted to jump out by ourselves. Uh, that if we were to do it, we'd want to be at the same, yeah.
But when you talk about like parents not knowing it, well, we're already seeing it K through six, or K through five. And for some of us, K through eight already, so it's not necessarily a huge learning curve. And parents might actually come to expect it, because quite honestly, now I get a report card that just has a letter, well, that doesn't mean anything, because I'm used to having something that's more spelled out.
And that was the more organic feel, that maybe we, you know, sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade, I mean, you know, to, to jump in halfway through a team might be difficult. I mean, there's all different conversations that we've, that have been battling.
Or maybe easier, because you have an, maybe an expectation or an understanding between your teachers with your students, so it might have a relationship component to it that lends more credibility to it. Not suggesting you necessarily go that route for one way or the other, but I could see it argued the other way, too. That maybe it helps or maybe it'd be too overwhelming to make a transition.
That's a good point, too, great.
So Ellen gave me some friendly feedback, because this was gonna be the last slide, and I said, "Mark, you never have a last slide." So, where's the last slide?
It's very pithy last slide.
I thought that little square thing.
Thanks, Kevin, very much.
Yeah, thanks all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, it was great, great information.
I love how you read into that.
Behave yourself.
Thank you very much, thanks, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
This is worth a long meeting.
Here's a, um-
Good to see you all.
Good night, all.
I just, this is what we do.
This says the one thirty-five, Ellen changed the PowerPoint to one twenty-five.
All right. All right, we just have, uh, we have a couple more items here that we need to just sort of crack through. Thank you, everyone, thanks, Ellen, as well.
So, can I, can I just pass out, you want me to pass out four point four?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And then, um, that way you'll have a chance to glance at it and share any feedback you have with me. We're not gonna hit it, guys, but I shared it with you late today. And, um, Lorna as well, so that she can, um, I think we'll be creating for you.
Okay.
So that, I think I showed it with everybody.
Yeah.
So that it'll be in the package for next time. But that way Brendan will get a chance to look at it, and he can share any feedback with me.
I'll give you my thoughts. Um, so we have a, a bunch of things we need to tackle under this, uh, next agenda item. So, I thought we could, uh, quickly talk about the three thirty-one meeting, which is our sort of community engagement opportunity about the budget. I thought we could just touch a little bit on a communication plan. And, um, we can also briefly talk about the exit survey, which was in your packet. So as far as the communication plan goes, um, this, I think it was Friday of last week, or maybe it was Monday of this week, I was able to share the budget flyer that's been produced and I think is being mailed this week.
I think, did you guys get it yet?
Yes, they did.
Oh, good, excellent. So, I, I got the PDF from, uh, Roger, put it up on our Facebook page, uh, shared it on Front Porch Forum as well. And at the same time, shared a copy of the, the piece was, that was in the Essex Reporter this, last week about, um, from the district, from the school board. So I think that was a good combo, got some good comments on Facebook, you know, people are receiving it either through the district website or through, uh, the link that they're finding. So, we're gonna continue to do, um, promotion about the three thirty-one meeting through all of our usual channels. The one thing I didn't know about, uh, Kim, was whether or not any progress has been made on those displays for, uh-
It will.
It will.
It may even be made as early as tomorrow or Wednesday. But we will certainly have them for, it, do we have a meeting that we need them for before we do them for bus pickups? Are there places that we envision using them before that? I frankly just have had absolutely no time to deal with it.
Yeah, well, this week is the book fair here at Founders.
Okay, is it like-
And there's also Salon Night, Lego Night here on Friday night.
Okay.
For parents, would be a huge event.
That would be great.
Uh, it does, because the non-draft off events, parents could at least have the opportunity to go by. Um, I'm trying to think of, I don't know what's-
Is that Thursday and Friday, Rachel?
The Salon Night, Lego Night is Friday night.
Friday night.
And then the book fair is, well, Wednesday through next Tues- Tuesday.
This Wednesday, through next Tuesday.
The Edge has got the fundraiser on Thursday, right?
Um, the Edge's fundraiser is on Saturday.
Saturday? Sorry, what am I thinking, Saturday? So that's a small group, but, but if we've got them there for Friday night, can we just move them over to that?
Yeah, so, so my target then, book fair Wednesday? So we might leave one sitting. Um, do, do you think that will work okay? I mean, this is often a very crowded space.
You would have to, yeah, you'd have to ask Sarah Jablonski, but there will be parent traffic coming through, um, during those times.
Okay, I'll actually see, I can see her Wednesday morning, um, just because I'm in mentoring that, um, Wednesday morning. So, I can bring it in and ask if she feels as though there may be space for it someplace, visible without being in her way? I don't think it will be a manned event, but rather a reminder to vote.
Right.
Just having it there.
And, and with the highlight slides, which is-
Yeah, and you can absolutely ask her, I don't know how she's planning on setting up.
Okay, I can ask her about that. Um, and then Friday night for Lego Night.
Salon Night, that would be talking with, Salon Night, Lego Night, that would be-
Are they both, okay.
Yeah, they're together, um, contact, I, I know the contacts for that.
Will you check on that and see, um, I would not be available to man that, but I don't know if, is that something we would envision manning or not so much?
Well, I'll be here. I think even if we had the information there, um, that might be-
Yep.
And where is the-
Here, um-
Here or at some Founders?
This, the Salon Night, Lego Night's here. Um, Lego Night in the gym, Salon Night in the cafeteria, and then the book fair will be open at that same time. So you'll have all three of that's going on.
I'm just thinking of then taking it over to the Edge thing.
That'd be great.
For the next morning.
And if anyone wants to go traveling with that thing, help yourself, I'm making three of them, so once I meet them, let's deploy them as often and-
Well, we should have, we should have one here for the, or we should have one at the three thirty-one meeting as well.
Yep.
Which is in the cafeteria at the middle school.
And then the other option would be if there's a place that would be open to community members.
The library has typically been willing to put it at their table up front. So when I have one to show them, maybe I can stop by there Wednesday, after I've got, um, let's see what, if we can work for Sarah in any way, shape or form in her space, um, so-
Have we ever looked at, you know, not so much, you know, community public places like the library, but more like Hannaford, Price Chopper? Everybody in Essex?
They will not typically.
Okay.
Um, they won't. And I think they would consider that political solicitation even to do a budget reminder flyer for their board, which often, I mean, I walk right by that bulletin board and don't notice a thing, frankly, and I probably walk by several times a week. So I'm not sure, I've never, I know they won't let us leave anything or sit outside for solicitation purposes.
Hmm, okay, all right. So the answer is yes, it has been looked at.
Yes.
All right, so it sounds like we're mostly on track with our, our general communication. The, uh, one of the things under this item in the agenda was discuss changes to the proposed statewide tax rate. I don't know if we need to discuss that here, what I was thinking was that I would update, I would work with Roger to update some of the slides in the presentation that we'll be using on the evening of three thirty-one, to show what the impact would be with a four cent increase versus a-
Seven.
Seven.
Seven cent increase.
Yeah, I would just caution us not to provide too much content, because it's at the, the will of the legislature and, and, uh-
Right.
Roger and Grant guys who talked today and, and the youth, the, uh, school boards in Essex, which in, um, central are thinking about putting more information out about that, but I, I think we should do that in concert, and I wouldn't, because it's a blended tax rate, I wouldn't, I don't think it would be advisable for them to put stuff out, and we didn't put stuff out, but I think we should have some consensus on what is it that we're putting out together. And so we're talking about that, you know.
I think that the two school districts, you should work together with the Essex Reporter and let them write an article, like, from the best perspective at the time.
We just don't want to, we don't want to confuse people either. Well, I thought you said they're dropping it by four cents, and then they decide it's gonna be five cents, and I-
Yeah, I mean, I, I was thinking about trying, you know, in the context of the presentation, to just, I think it's important to let voters know that this is still fluid, you know.
They're bringing it into focus.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, so it's, I don't want people to come to the meeting and, and be ready to, with their pitchforks if there's, if there, there's another story that's also developing in the background, and maybe it isn't all the way baked, but we can at least, you know, talk about it, that, that this is a conversation that is happening and it could likely come to, come to pass.
And I'm not sure that I completely understand the, the full process, but I think getting out of house ways and means at the rate that it is with the vote that that committee took on this, that'll be the last that committee takes on that topic before it gets passed. To, I don't know if it's the full legislature or the Senate. Uh, again, I'm not exactly sure about the process.
I just want, you want to just unintentionally send the message, vote it down, instead of the message that you wanted to drop it by four cents. I mean, it's that type of thing I'd be concerned about, then why vote yes when they're gonna be dropping it? I mean, it's that, you know, voters do funny things, depending on what information they have.
But I'm just voting it down, because-
There's a, there, there is, there's discussion about the, the thirty-five that went down was because they didn't like the tax increase, so we're-
Oh, but it down for the sake of the tax increase, right?
Let's send a message, because, because they're gonna be, giving us a break anyway, so just let them, I mean, you know, who knows?
Now, it feels like our, our message has consistently been around the portion of the increase that we control.
Right.
The process that we go through to formulate a budget that's responsive to needs for kids.
That's been the message, isn't it, yeah.
And outcomes, and I feel our community has been largely focused on that, but notwithstanding the additional seven cents is, brings us to nearly a double-digit increase, which is-
Right.
I, I would hate for us not to say anything.
Well, you know, and it might be something just to show that, you know, this is still, like you were saying, this is still unknown exactly where it's gonna land, but just to give an indication, if it, you know, each penny is this much, you know, or each, you know, just to show that it does have an impact if they change their mind.
I mean, my intention is to really use the slides that were developed, you know, a month ago, to, for the, the evening of the thirty-first. But I think it would be good to have at least maybe one slide to be like, here's, here's the other conversation that's occurring. Here's what we know, and here's all the, all the slides, and here's the increase as we know it, but then there's also this other conversation happening and it's not quite done. So, this is still up in the air to some degree. So, I don't, I don't want to upend our whole, the argument that we've been making, but I think it's important to just let people know that, um, if they're intending to vote no, to lodge some kind of protest, the number may actually be different. The minute they walk in, into the booth, they cast their vote. So, I just, you know, we'll, we'll do it appropriately.
Yeah.
But I think it's important to at least allude to it.
And I think, um, we need to be responsible to being sort of advocates and, and, um, conduits for information on education-related topics that are coming out of Montpelier. And if that information is, has been, you know, plenty of public conversation about this in Montpelier, we would be remiss in not sharing latest information.
Right.
And caveating it as being not, um, final.
The good thing is it's not gonna get any worse.
Right, right.
That is very true.
I mean, that's, that's a little bit in how I was feeling, that the only thing they were debating was not the two cents, it was the third penny. That was the only conversation in that committee as I sat there listening, um, was about that last penny.
So it's going under to four or five?
Four or five, as opposed to seven.
So-
So, anyway.
So anyway, I think we'll, I think the presentation will make some slight adjustments and be ready for that. It sounds like we have some childcare help that we can count on.
Yeah, one of my things was the second confirmation.
That's great. My hope was, uh, or my plan is to do some publicity around the date, so it was in the Essex Reporter. It's been mentioned, um, uh, on Facebook and Front Porch Forum. So I think we'll just continue to kind of let people know through those channels what this date is and what the meeting is about, and, um, so that will continue. The other thing I wanted to just remind myself about was the food plan for that night. We decided not to do spaghetti. So what did we decide to do?
Um, I think I mentioned like cheese cracker type thing at one point.
No, I, I've got that covered.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just gonna be cheese, fruit, crackers, cider.
Some platters, yeah, yeah.
Sounds perfect.
And, and you were in the district.
I, I, I just would do it for you rather than-
Okay, that's fine.
You guys don't have to worry.
I'll say, I can get Lauren to make some chocolate chip cookies.
Nice, I just, you have enough on your plate.
Um, and so my final, uh, question was, um, no, that was it.
Well, they're asking for you to do things, Mark, could we do either the sandwich board if there's not, if there's a place to put it with, uh, with the snow?
All the snow?
And or maybe, um, like, uh, something that could be stuck on the doors from, at the schoolhouses to remind people of, like the thing that-
To promote the meeting on the thirty-first.
For the meeting on the thirty-first.
On the thirty-first, sure.
Um, and then of course, I think we do that on the boat day or coming up on the boat day anyway.
Right, so budget info meeting.
Budget info meeting and the date and location, I think it's EMS, right?
Yeah.
Cafeteria refreshments and childcare or something.
Sure.
Um, and if we can put that on something they print out and just hang on their doors?
Uh-huh, school doors.
Yeah, school doors, is that, is there room on the doors or are there instructions now that sort of prevent that kind of flyering?
Yeah.
Just maybe for one day.
I'm sure there's one.
Okay.
Do you need room for kid childcare? Do you know what your space requirements are?
I'm a s- okay, so-
You at the full gym?
I'm sure that'll be more than enough space, you know, um, you know, and even the act-
Oh, yeah, lame run around.
You know, it might actually be, well, that could be, and they could get the balls out, the kids could, they would have a lot of fun with that, as to whether or not it's available.
Basketball night is Tuesday, Thursday, although the indoor sports are gonna be a part of it.
They have all the sports, they don't know what.
So, you're gonna find a classroom space for you?
Um, if not, a classroom space that's close, um, you know, of course Avery is one of them, um, she's used to the Edge space and is very comfortable in that space. Um, and would know what's available.
The Edge space it is.
So that would probably be easiest if it's available, and it's a quick jolt over.
Yeah.
All right.
If they have an issue.
I have no idea how many people may come. I have not seen one letter in the Essex Reporter, I have not had that many conversations in the aisles of Hannaford. I don't know what to expect. And it's, it's very, it's eerily reminiscent of last year.
I love this silence, it takes me crazy.
Right, so it's like, are they happy? Are they gonna come out in favor or not? So, we'll find out. The final thing that I wanted to just, um, give, uh, Rachel and Dan a chance to talk about if you'd like is the survey, the exit survey questions. Um, I assume what was, uh, distributed with the packet is kind of your latest draft.
Well, and I have to say, I, I took the information from the last meeting and updated and sent it to Mark. And so I did not share with Dan.
So Dan, what do you think?
That's my fault, I'm such a team player, um-
Well, if I recall, our last conversation was we started to go down the, uh, the pathway of, well, let's use this as a way to gauge some kind of response to the ends.
Now, this one, isn't this the same as the old one? I don't think-
Oh, this is the old one, this isn't the new one.
This is the old one, this is not the one we put together. And I know we put one together and then you guys-
Yeah.
Give feedback, but this is, this is the, this is the two thousand eleven one.
No, this is the old one on here, I'm sorry, I didn't even look to see, um-
I, I bet it's the old Google, I bet this lives on the Google Drive.
Yeah.
So I, my, the other one was, um, well, can I get into mine?
Lauren, Lauren literally just changed two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen, sent this to us weeks ago.
Oh.
And said, "Is this it?"
Oh, I see.
"Are you doing anything different?" And then we both said back, "No, wait, we're, we're gonna tweak it,"
But I might have it.
She brought, Rachel brought to you the last time. So we don't, uh, yeah, this is-
Okay, I would have, hold on, Mark.
We, I, I thought-
If we're being here, hold on, I'm just gonna find, well, and then it's changed substantially because there were, there was a lot of feedback on that one.
Yeah, I, I would say, I've got it, I've got an email too, so please. Right, but I, I know you, you sent me one that was-
I did forward it to you.
Yeah, your, your non-firty version of like, here's what I-
From Mark. Thank you, yes, because I'm not good at doing the pretty version, um, that's why I always had Heather Cornell was my saber in PTO, can I- Heather Cornell was my saber and PTO, can I tell you? Um, where is it? Okay, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. Oh, this is just my mailbox I need to
Well, um, so here's the suggestion.
Why, why don't we talk while we're looking?
Well, here's a suggestion, I'm wondering if, um,
Oh, there it is, that's it right there.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So if you voted yes, if you voted no, okay. And then
'Cause one of the things we talked about is we had a pretty good sense where people were getting the information.
Your understanding of the state education tax rate is? So what is question three supposed to help us understand? Whether or not we need to do more education about the impact of the state education tax rate?
Yes, so that, I think that's what the idea was, 'cause that came out of the conversation that we had at the last meeting.
Okay.
Was about seeing whether people, if I remembered.
Get that.
Look at the tax rate versus a budget increase.
Budget, yeah.
Right. Okay, can we slide down a little more?
And that was, and because the whole idea of looking at the exit
Okay.
interview again was to get, this was the whole reason we were actually looking at it was to include in about the ends policies.
Yeah.
That's a much quicker response for folks and it's not as stragging, that's great.
I wonder, a, a one, two and three is not very, doesn't break it down very much. I mean, who's gonna say these aren't important? Um, I almost wondered if it could be a larger scale, like a one to ten, um.
I will remind people, only because, is, um, so when I initially pulled together a draft of this survey in December, it had a scale of one to five for each of these categories, and you guys at that meeting decided it wasn't the way to go.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think that's what happened, so, so it's fine. I just, I just, I'm reminded that that was initially, uh, shot down.
Oh, yeah. And that went back, and that went back to the whole, the conversation that we had because, um, because it still goes back to how do we use this? And so that's still my question.
But one through five helps you understand, rather than yes, no, maybe, whether or not people, like how, what kind of importance the community puts on this.
How committed they are.
So in other words, if civic literacy gets twos, which could be an answer people could give, eh, it's not really that important,
Yeah.
then that's very indicative versus it's something that we lead with.
In the middle, 'cause probably if it's not, um, if you're not strong on either end, it's a middle and that doesn't inform us as much.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I, I would agree that if we're gonna do this kind of, uh, scale, that it be a, a more numbers, not, not three choices.
Mm-hmm.
Broader.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Five, seven, ten, whatever.
Yeah.
Right.
Um.
I, I think that would, 'cause then, you know, 'cause right now, right, I look like a cretin if I say, oh, creativity's not important.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But I don't really feel it's not important, but maybe I just don't feel it's that important because I think there should be more
Right, it's, it's the highest thing.
Do we just stay at, say at the top, like rank or, or, um, indicate the level of importance? One being, you know, not a, not a important and, you know, six. I love that notion of it being even, so they, you force them to one side or the other.
Not, nothing, no. Yeah.
Ten being, yeah. Oh, right.
I don't know much about surveys, so I, that's just my, tell me what you really think. Don't stick yourself in the middle inclination, I guess.
No.
But Yeah, so I, yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to spread that out. The thing I was aiming for when we were initially putting it together was as hard as it is to score the qualitative answers, I find those so much more valuable.
Right.
Um, and it's, you know, the, the questions, what, what do you think could be done to improve the schools? To improve our communicate, you know, whatever, that kind of question as opposed to A, B, C or D?
Yeah, and our, and our conversation at the last meeting, Dan, was we're asking people to stop after they've voted. They have, they've rushed out of work to try to get ten minutes to come vote, and are they gonna have time uh, to give a thoughtful answer to more of those open-ended questions? And we decided at the last meeting that this is really just to get some kind of a dashboard, like, take the temperature of people on some of these questions. Just because we don't have the ability, people, we can ask the question, but likely the responses will be either none
Right.
or very, very not thought out.
Yeah.
So I think that, I, I hope, I, I love the idea of adding maybe six, a scale of six or whatever to these questions. And, but I hope that the board will use this information as one indicator of how to shape its next conversation with the community on these issues. Not necessarily some kind of a, well, the, the community said that health literacy wasn't important, so we're taking that off the ends.
No, no, but it's, but then what do you do? Is it then a focus on educating about what health literacy is or?
Maybe.
I mean, so
Did we even put, I didn't notice the technology one was up there. I mean, that
No, the technology one we did put on because of the way it kind of is incorporated with everything else.
Continue to come back, come back, but it's It becomes part of everything, and so that, you know, that has presented itself often enough over the course of the last year or two that, you know, certainly begs the question for its existence on its own and, and if it isn't already embedded in every other ends policy that we, you know, discussion that we have, so, because it's just like a way of doing business now for kids and educators, so
Right.
So, um, so I'm glad that it's not up there standing on its own, and it's definitely something that's struck probably all of us over the last year or two and as we look at policies, we'll need to, to do
I think, I, I still, I, I would say the most common comment though that I hear in the public is, why are we spending so much on computers for every kid?
Right.
Hmm.
Yeah, that, that, I think is still an issue.
Yeah, I think the policy though speaks to their, you know, I, more like critical consumers of the tool.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I, it, um, it doesn't speak as much to how it's embedded in
Yeah.
the curriculum, at least in the way I recall looking at it. Again, we look at it so little in isolation, but
Hmm.
Is it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure that I've given it a ton of thought lately, but it just seems as though it was more of how you use the tool than it was
So, so I guess my, uh, my suggestion to the two of you would be to, to, I mean, this looks good to me for the, for the, for for what it is meant to do, I think it looks, uh, adequate, um, but I would suggest adding more options for the scale.
Mm-hmm.
And then I would, I think that's it. I think you're, I think that's, that's the survey.
Is, is number six the end? Is there nothing below that, at the end of it?
No, there's nothing below that.
Say thank you.
Just a thank you, yes. Oh, and, oh, is it the
'Cause this is online, and when we print it, Mark, does it, will it print, that I presume will be front and back?
If you, yeah.
For those who, are we gonna have people do a paper copy potentially?
Paper copies. Yeah.
So it would print on front and back.
So I'd like the adjustment on the Google survey one through six.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I, I think we should have something on there, even if ninety percent of people aren't gonna have time to do it. I think we should have a space there for people to write something qualitative.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think, and I think we had that on the, on the other survey was, you know, share your comments.
Right.
I think we framed the question, what it, well, I'll read it, what education-related topics would you like to learn more about? Please share it. Any additional thoughts, comments or suggestions?
Any additional thoughts. Yeah.
Can we add that question, Mark, and still keep it on two pages?
That was last year's number five, yeah.
Last year's number five.
I'd like to offer a different perspective.
Yes, Dan.
The four of you have kids in the school, you have a vested interest in it. I'm part of the older generation. I think that you're really looking at two different questionnaires. The older generation, they won't ask, why did you vote yes, why did you vote no? It is the younger generation with kids in the school that perhaps would be more interested in this.
Maybe.
Do you blend the two together? Which one do you use? How do you handle it?
I think, I think it's gotta be one because I don't think we can have two out there that says, if you're an old folk, you take this one, and if you care about schools, take this, you know, obviously
Well, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I, I think someone's gonna pick this up and go, I'm gonna talk a lot about why I voted for this budget or why I didn't vote for this budget. Okay, did they give us a lot of information there and they don't really even answer the bottom ones? That's still important information. The other one might just, you know, check something up top and really give us a long expository on why these ends policies are good or bad or whatever. I
I think that's what we saw last time, as I recall, that, you know, not all of the surveys were complete. But people filled out the things that they were most interested in.
Right.
And will, in the Google survey, in the online version of it, um, can they record their response if they choose not to answer every question? Perfect. Yeah, that might get to it, David, right there.
Just change your end status.
Right.
Um, just by allowing people to answer, you know, not all of it be done.
So we're So were we going to ask people to fill this out online?
You know, the reason that was, what are the ideas?
You have paper, paper bank or laptops that are
Okay, great, I forgot, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so for that, I mean, if they've got a piece of paper, they can write on the back, but I think if it's gonna be online, there needs to be a space for them to
Yeah.
type in a comment if they wanna type in a comment.
Okay. So you guys, so we can make those changes? Have it ready in time for
'Cause I was gonna say you're the one that
No, I'll take care of it.
Right. Alright, so, um,
Thanks, Mark.
I think that gets us through all of the items under, under, um, four point two. And, um, so the last item that's really on, on this agenda is, um, uh, an executive session for the purpose of monitoring superintendent performance. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
You make a motion, we enter into executive session.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in executive session.